Good evening, everybody. Thanks for attending our meeting tonight. Call us to order. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Wilson.
Here.
Councilmember Black.
Here.
Councilmember Benner.
Here.
Mayor pro tem Piper.
Here.
And Mayor.
Here.
Mr. Piper, would you like to lead us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Very eloquent. Thank you.
No.
Okay. Presentations, proclamations, announcements, none? Order of agenda, my fellow council members would approve of this. I would like to switch, because we have guests in the audience to speak on the issues, like to switch 12A and 12B.
Great.
And...
And put them when, right after the consent?
Well, you know, just switch them among old business. I was going to move 12A and 12B, but if we have, if Mr. Bennett comes before 13A, because he would like to be here for this, we have Rick, but if we have Mr. Bennett as well, then I'm going to do 12B, 13A, then go back to 12A. And if Mr. Bennett is not here in time, we'll just do 12A, reverse 12A and 12B. Is that totally muddy now? Everybody okay with that?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you with that. So moving right along. I see no blue folder items?
Nope.
Do we have any public comment on non-agenda items? Hi, Melissa.
Hi, you guys. Melissa McNabb, president of the Women's Club, Leavenquay Ridge Road South. I have an extremely brief video clip I wanted to share with the council tonight of our successful egg hunt event that we had yesterday afternoon, and I'm sorry, it's not better quality. Perhaps we need to turn the lights down?
No.
Okay. All right. It was, it was a successful event, even though the weather was very challenging. We had over 350 community members, kids, adults join us for the day, and it was just wonderful. So I just wanted to share this with you guys for a quick second.
Thank you.
It's going to stay small, just because it's really important.
Yeah. Let it rip.
It'll go.
My gosh.
How many kids?
Over 120.
Oh, my gosh. So most of the 150 were children.
There were more adults than children, but there was still over 120 kids.
How many?
We had over 350 total people, but the kids were 120, a little bit more. And look at them running around getting the eggs and stuff.
That whole thing took about...
This little girl right here in front.
Yeah, it was so fast. They were gone.
That was so great. Thank you.
That with you. We got, Annie Acapini took the video. It was just wonderful, and I wanted to say again, thank you very much for your continued support. This is what it does in the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We appreciate that.
That's great.
Any other public comment on items not on the agenda?
Agree.
Hearing none, we'll move to the consent calendar, wishes of council.
I'll move the consent calendar.
I'll second it.
I would act, I would, I'm sorry, I would actually like to pull 8E. Would you like to amend your...
Sure. I'll move all of them except for 8B as in boy, who said?
E is an elephant.
Oh, E, sorry. Yes. Thank you.
I'll second it.
In favor?
Aye.
Do I have to have public comment? Ask for public comment on the consent?
Not on the consent, but on 8E, since it is pulled, we will take public comment on that item. Madam Mayor.
So moving along from that, then we go to excluded consent calendar items. Oh, and there was, I needed to say something. I'm, I'm so sorry. You guys really shouldn't trust this to me. On the item, the minutes, which I believe 8C, on item 8C, there was just a small omission of the name, the company. We had a person that spoke on the issue about the carrier of last resort, and her name was listed, but not that she represented AT&amp;T, and it's already been included in the, in the minutes.
Okay.
So on 8E, like Edward, let me get that. This is the issue of the reports from Republic.
And the first thing...
That I noticed on page 18. First of all, the reports aren't like they usually are, where they give us the yearly, so that you can see what everything is for the year, what they're averaging. Don't we usually see it?
It should be an aggregate. So as, as we go each month, it should, it'll, you'll have January, February, you should have January, February in this one. Let me just, so that is for, yeah, this should be an aggregate amount.
Are you saying that the, without seeing those monthlies that I'm used to seeing, that this grand total now represents the whole year?
That represents 2024, January and February.
Okay, so in January and February, it appears that we are not meeting our goal for diversion percentage, and I just, I believe diversion percentage, although this probably meets the state, it's not meeting ours. And so I just want to make sure that with the other issues that we're addressing with Republic...
We'll bring it to their attention.
That, that is there. I don't want that to be a trend that we're seeing. And I wanted to bring out, so that everybody makes sure that they see this, I like the addition of the red tag report in there, and I look forward to seeing that in the future. I think that's additive to that. But my main question was about that report and not meeting our diversion rate.
And now that you mentioned the red tags, can you explain what qualifies as a red tag and what does it mean that the green waste was overload? I'm assuming that they put too much green waste in their bins or...
Correct. So, so Republic hasn't, hasn't been red tagging, at least in recent years, to let residents know why maybe something's not getting picked up. For example, you know, in recent months, we've had barrels filled with water. They, they can't pick them up, you know, so they need residents to drain the water. Or green waste is not, is either too heavy in the barrels, or say like with a, the green waste special event we just had, if it's not bundled in four-foot segments, you know, that are 60 pounds. So what they're trying to do is help educate the residents as to what is in the contract parameters, and, and just make sure that when people call City Hall, you know, we're able to then find out, hey, did they really not pick up your trash, or was there a reason? So the red tags help educate the residents, they also help staff gain clarity on why something was or was not picked up. And then we can also convey that to residents.
Okay. Okay. Thank you for that explanation. Thanks.
Have a motion to move this...
Public comment.
Oh, I'm sorry. Public comment on this issue? Hearing none?
I make a motion, we approve or receive and file.
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Okay. Thank you very much. Commission items, none. Public hearings, none. Old business, I'm going to go to 12B, which is receive a status update on the tennis court, ADA.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of City Council. This evening, you will be receiving a status update on the tennis court, ADA, Cabana and Tennis Court, Number One Expansion Projects. The presentation this evening will be provided by staff, as well as Alan Palermo, who is the project manager for this particular item. I'll pass it to Christian.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor and Council. So over the past few years, you have been discussing the ADA Tennis Court project, as well as, as well as the potential of restriping Tennis Court One. And, and so tonight, we are bringing this back to you, just as an update, to let you know where things are at. Over the past couple of years, the project went through different engineering and design phases. It went to LA County Building and Safety last year in May for round one. We got comments back, came back in June. We, we answered their initial comments, and it went back to them. And we had an anticipation that we would have the project back sometime in July, just based on the way they were moving through projects at that time. That did not happen. There continue to be delays at, at Building and Safety. And so during last year's budget, you also did authorize $307,000 to be applied towards that project. Some of those monies was to redo the design elements as it related to landscaping, which would come after the ADA project. Those monies are still there. And during this whole time, we have also been in discussions with the Rolling Hills Community Association, specific to the project, because not only do we have our ADA project, but they have this cabana project, which is tearing down the existing cabana, redoing it, putting in a, a brand-new kitchen. We have some regrading in the area, specific to the future pickleball courts at Tennis Court One. And so there have been ongoing discussions between the RHCA and, and the city, in terms of how do we schedule the projects? Doing the ADA project first, and then the cabana project afterwards, creates issues because all the work we would do on the ADA would potentially get torn up and ruined. And so we're trying to figure out how to ensure that these projects are done in an appropriate manner, and, and we've been having discussions about the possibility of combining projects. With that said, the, the third project that has been discussed over there, as I mentioned briefly, is Tennis Court ReOne being rebuilt, extended a little bit, and then restripped to accommodate four pickleball courts. And so that project would come after the two projects I just discussed, the cabana and the ADA. With that said, we have finally reached a, a point where the ADA project has completed its travels through LA County's network of building and safety, and the RHCA is still in their process, as it relates to, to the projects that they have been working on. Alan Palermo was here. He can also, might future some color to the discussion, if you want to come up, Alan. But I would say for now, that is, that is the update as to where we are. Your staff report does have monies on, does have information on projected costs and the expenditure range, but the one thing that we should point out is, is that for Tennis Court One expansion, staff is assuming a potential expenditure range of $330,000 to And I'll let Alan weigh in.
Good evening. I'm Alan Palermo. Thank you, Christian. So part of the dilemma that Christian was alluding to was the way the project was structured. The city is responsible for the, for the Tennis Court ADA improvements, then the association's responsible for the cabana. The reality of those, the cabana project kind of relies on the, the ADA improvement project with, as far as grading and utilities or whatnot, so they really want to be combined as one project. But we ran into some issues. We were talking with a legal counsel for the city, and it's hard to separate the projects without doing them either as both non-pervailing wage or prevailing wage. So the association presented to the city a solution about what if we take over the ADA improvements, combine it with the cabana, so that it's done as one project, and then the city would take over the Tennis Court Expansion Project after the fact, after the first two projects are done. So that's kind of the direction we've been working towards. So the, we have the, as Christian alluded to, we have, the improvement plans for the ADA project are approved by Building and Safety, so that project can move forward to construction. If the cabana project goes with it, we need, we'll wait until those plans are approved too, and then that would be packaged as one particular project that would be handled by the association. The association has also taken a next step, because they recognize they were going to need a construction manager for the cabana project, so they've hired a construction manager, and that construction manager is actually putting together a comprehensive cost estimate, construction cost estimate, for both the ADA and the cabana, assuming they were going to go together as one project. So I think where we're at tonight is just kind of looking to council give us, you know, some insight or some additional information that we should be looking at if we were going to proceed down this path, of where the association would take over a por, a portion of the project that was initially the city was going to do, and the city in turn would take over the exp, future expansion cor, Tennis Court Expansion Project that the association was going to do.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Palermo? Go ahead.
Okay. So, Mr. Palermo, I just wanted to find out, if we go with that particular plan of combining the cabana project with the ADA, then would there be, you know, in, for the city to do the Tennis Court improvements, which involves the expansion, and basically, it sounds like it's tearing up Tennis Court One and redoing it.
Correct. Tennis, Tennis Court One would be removed and replaced with a slightly larger court and with the setup for pickleball. Correct.
For the construction vehicles needed for the city project as envisioned, would there be any tearing up or, or damage to the ADA improvements in order to get the vehicles in there to do the tear up?
No, I don't believe so, because there has, a lot of the grading that would be done to support the expansion project, majority of it would be done under the ADA improvement project. There's just a little portion, if I get my bearings right, I think on the south, southeast corner, that would provide access that's away from the other improvements that would already have been completed. So there...
So you think, though, all the, the construction vehicles would be getting in through that southeast access, so they wouldn't damage all the work that was done?
Correct. There's enough separation, we believe, that if they fence it off properly, and obviously it'd be looked at very closely, and pictures taken beforehand, you know, the usual construct, pre-construction stuff to ensure, but there is a way to, I believe it's a lot, would be a lot easier to do this than when we tried to look at doing the cabana with the ADA project. We were running into all kinds of conflicts, so it's, it's feasible.
Okay. That was my concern.
Pat, we went over this quite a few times, about we are responsible for the ADA, and I'm responsible for this, and we can't mix because of prevailing wage. Suddenly, we're mixing it all, which I, we were told again and again, we can't.
So in fact, what, what, what I believe what we're trying to do is ensure they're not mixed.
Correct.
In that, what we didn't want to do is have the city project come in for the ADA, which does involve some level of grading. We then put everything on pause, they then come in and build the cabana, they then leave, and then we come back in and, and finish it. That, that scheduling is not necessarily indicative of two separate projects, rather, that, that is indicative of a collective. And so what we, what we are trying to set up now is a, is, is to go to that very point. We want to try to make them as separate and distinct as possible. The RHCA portion of the, not even that, the RHCA project could stand alone, they could do the ADA improvements, if that's the direction we go with, as well as the cabana. Ours could stand alone, in that we could potentially, you know, rehab, Tennis Court One, is that, is that number one, without the cabana. So that is, we are, we are trying to get exactly where...
You're totally good with this. You're totally good with this.
Correct. Now, now, once again, I can't speak authoritatively for the Department of Industrial Relations, but yes, this is consistent with our past practices and the way it is set up, that they are two separate and distinct projects, such that they can stand alone. That is the whole point of, of why we're doing this.
So my only other thing is, this has gone on for, can we get it done? Is there a chance we could finish this in 2024? Our residents have been waiting for this for years and years.
On the current path, I would say that the ADA cabana project could be completed this calendar year. All we need is the improved, improvement plans, and they go out to bid. The idea would be that the expansion project would follow that, so that would might bleed, that would probably bleed into 2025.
And right now, at this time, we are waiting to hear back from RHCA on the final approval of their plans. So they got some comments, and they responded, so hopefully, in the next couple of weeks, we'll hear back on their final approved plans. That way, we can proceed, and they'll get the permits and such, so.
Pat? So going along with what Councilmember Black said about the amount of time, there's been a tremendous amount of time. There's been a tremendous amount of dollar amounts that have been thrown out, taken back, revised, and I'll just admit, I'm having trouble keeping track of this. My question is, what is the dollar difference if we give up the ADA part of it, and hand that off to the association, and then take on the Tennis Court improvement? I mean, I guess it's comparatively speaking, but where would we be at dollar-wise with that?
That cost estimate that I spoke of, that they're having their construction manager put together, once they have that finalized, and that's, I think, tracking about the same time as the improvement plans, we'll have a better idea of what those dollars are, to see if it's, if it's relatively equivalent.
Where are we at right now, if we were to approve the ADA project, which doesn't sound like we're going to, but I mean, is that the, the amounts that are here, the 330,000 to 400,000?
330,000 to 400,000 is the estimate for the Tennis Court Expansion Project.
Okay. And what is it for the, the ADA project?
The ADA project had an old cost estimate of 300,000, but that was from several years ago.
Right. Okay. So there's...
We don't, you're right. We, at this ti, at this time, we do not have that equivalent estimate. We expect to have that in the coming weeks, at which time we, you know, we can certainly report back.
Okay. If I, if I could just, because that was my question, exactly, but with not knowing what we're, we're actually dealing with, it was 307,000 that we had authorized for our portion before. So we're talking about, we were looking way back then, in 2023, of 307,000, and we could be looking at 400 or more now, if we were to do the switch. But we know we're not going to get the old piece for 307, probably, either.
Fair assessment, yes.
Thank you. Any other questions before open public? Thank you. Any comments from public? Mr. Visko?
I'm assuming, but maybe I'm not, the septic tank, a new septic tank is included in this project. Do we know what the cost of, of, of the new septic tank is? Is there a projection on that?
The septic, the septic tank is part of this project. The septic tank was already replaced by the community association last year.
It's already in the...
Community Association's project.
It's already in the ground.
And it's in.
It's in the ground.
It's done?
Yeah. So it's not a project.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome. Any other comments from the public? Mr. Bennett?
Sean Bennett, 3 Eastfield. I, there's going to be a variance between prevailing wage and the other estimates you get. So wherever that was, the 307 you mentioned, was that a prevailing wage project, or was that a...
Yeah. That was...
That our, that was what we had to put out of our budget, if we were going to be doing it, so that would include prevailing wage at that time.
Okay. So it should, if, depending on how this is broken up and who it gets bid to, it could be less, if it's done on unusual...
Yeah, that part could be less. Yeah.
And when he mentioned, Al Palermo mentioned, the exiting of the demolition to the southeast side, there is vegetation, I think, that's being kept along that side there. It should be, try to be kept, if they can go around it, unless, if they go closer to just the, not as deep east, but more closer to the front of the guard, garden house as an exit point, then further back, then you'd be saving some vegetation that will help screen, I think.
That'd be great. Thank, thank you for that. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd close the public comment portion, what the wishes of council.
I make a motion, receive and file?
Second. All favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. And we have all the dignitaries here to speak on our next, thank you, Alan, on our next ish item, so I am going to move 13A, as said before, up in this place. 13A is approved for post-City Hall campus landscape designs and acceptance of California Water Services 2024 turf replacement rebate program offered to assist in effectuating home hardening strategies and refreshed water-wise plantings and irrigation.
Madam Mayor, members of City Council, this evening, we have Stephanie Grant, Assistant Planner, who will be working closely with Christian Horvath, our city clerk, to present this item. We also have guest speakers from Cal Water here as well. We have Ms. Colby, who will be assisting us with the conversation that will be presenting this item on behalf of Cal Water. So I will go ahead and I will pass this on over to Christian and to Stephanie, who are going to be the champions for this program. Thank you.
All righty. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I just wanted to provide like a quick background of this project. I know from 2017 to 2020, our campus was poorly maintained with diseased vegetation, broken irrigation lines and sprinklers, and we were in dire need of an upgrade and replacement. And according to, the city lacked as-built for existing irrigation system and a plant pallet. And then in 2022, of course, the city went out for an RFP for landscaping services, and of course Bennett Landscaping was selected. We are right here. Sorry about that. In February of 2023, the council approved $2,875 for landscape designs, and Bennett had chosen Rick Dyxel to do the landscape designs. And the total for the city received, the landscape designs, the total was for landscape improvements, irrigation repairs, and go-for mitigation, and the total was for $10,335. And of course, it was separate from the maintenance costs. Mr. Dyxel was hired for Bennett Landscape to provide an updated cohesive designs of removing the existing landscaping and replacing it with drought-resistant and low water usage and low maintenance plants. Also, Mr. Dyxel was hired to evaluate our home hardening. So our, you know, so our campus could be a model for the home hardening. In spring of 2023, initial designs and plant pallets were presented to staff, but they were actually put on hold, because the city was in the selection of, of selecting a new city manager. So I know we were going to redesign the campus and install the new land, we were going to do the campus redesign. There was a resident that came to the staff's attention and brought it up, that Cal Water actually had a rebate program that would actually pay the city to replace existing lawn with drought-resistant and native, you know, drought-resistant plants. So staff looked into that, and we reached out to Cal Water, and over the course of months, worked closely with Cal Water to, you know, present some designs and, you know, back and forth with different, different options. And actually, in December of 2023, there were areas on the campus that were deemed eligible, so we found out in December that we were eligible for the grant. I mean, it's not a grant, it's actually a rebate. It's a rebate, it's a, it's a rebate that's from Cal Water. And in January of 2024, we met with Mr. Dyxel and Bennett Landscaping to update the, the plans and designs, so that way then, we could be in, you know, for compliant with Cal, whatever Cal Water would, you know, require. And, and then on March 2024, the Rolling Hills Community Association Landscape Committee approved our designs and revised plans. And that's just in my short overview, and here's Kristi here, to kind of give more information and details about what the, the rebate program is, what the Cal Water rebate program is.
Family, members of council, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. We're really excited to work through this, through the process with you and with your staff. They've been wonderful. So, yes, the... So, yes, an interest call came in and we were able to work with your existing staff. And they'd already developed a landscape plan, which really didn't even need that, that much work. And we had our staff come out and do some measurements and look at the areas that you wanted to replace and realize this is a great opportunity for both of us. So for us, you know, we really want to support you in water efficiency a bit more. We're hoping to inspire future, you know, homeowners as they walk through to convert their gardens into more sustainable landscaping. So we were able, can you go to the next slide?
Yeah, of course.
So typically, what we do is we're often industrial properties, a dollar per square foot. When we took a look at your property, we're, and through the timing of it, we're able to extend the three dollars per square foot that we normally use for our residents. In addition, we also were able to include some of the shrubberies that you're going to remove because they are being watered the same as grass. So we expanded the area that we were able to do for your, your planting so that you could get the maximum amount of incentive for the program. So basically with the program, it comes with the pre-application, which you have applied and you have approved. And just the application is a phone call. It's just, here's what we need to do. And we've laid out with your staff what happens next. And what happens next is upon your approval, then we set up a guideline with them. Our typical amount of time for project completion is usually three months. We've extended it to six months in this instance, you know, due to some of the constraints that seem to be getting projects completed and contractors in place and everything else. So we're aware of that and we're going to work with staff to keep them on this timeline to get approved in, in the six month period. You will complete the plans as your discretion on your approval. We already looked at the plant list and I've been in contact with the landscaper and we've gone over the plant list, so we're provided what was approved. And then following that, then it's a simple matter of you telling me you're done. We come back out and verify that it's done, take some pictures, complete your application, and hopefully have a very wonderful, successful joint public outreach event where we can let homeowners know this is available to them and you can celebrate your new landscape area. Following which, that we would issue a check for whatever the rebate amount was, which was us, ended up being up to forty-eight thousand eight hundred ninety-seven thousand. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Good, I'm sure we have some. Bella council members, if you have any questions before we open it up?
I mean, I appreciate your calculations. I just want to make sure there's not going to be a change later on because it doesn't make sense to me. We got twenty-six thousand five hundred square feet around the city and then thirteen hundred square feet by the tennis court. And you're going to allow full thirteen hundred square feet by the tennis court, which means every bit of that lawn has to go. And then over by the city, you're allowing sixteen five, which I looked at Rick's plan and a lot of it is like the same out front as far as roses and star jasmine. I want to make sure that every single, and I, we're not taking out all the lawn in the back. Usually I know these programs involve, you have to take out your lawn. You have to commit that you're never going to put it back in again. What?
Five years. There's a five-year commitment that you will not replant her.
So it's only five years, it's not in perpetuity, it's not on our, that's, thank God for that. Because I just, I want to make sure the calculations aren't going to change. Because it doesn't make sense to me, quite honestly.
So the tennis court area is removed, this was originally approved for a higher rebate amount and the tennis court, because it wasn't going to be able to be completed within the program guidelines, was removed. So the number that we're discussing here, it already does not include the tennis court.
So that thirteen hundred square feet that it says it allows is not included. And then looking at the city, I just, five years is okay because some of these, it's essentially forty-three thousand six fifty. And if it's only five years, but I don't want to give up our right to put other stuff in forever because some of these plants, I don't know some of them, but some of the drought resistant ones are really ugly. And we don't want that.
Well, I'm just so sure you're going to love it that one has five years and you're going to just happen.
I know the program pretty well.
And if you'd like, we can go into the proposed landscape with our guests and then we can come back with additional questions if that's okay? Or do you want to continue asking Ms. Colby questions?
I have a clarification I'd like to get.
Sure.
Do I understand that we have to get approval from the association for this?
And they did.
No, I know they did, but did we, we had to go to them for this?
Mm-hmm.
For our, the city's property that they rent from us, we had to get their approval?
Everybody has to get a community association.
Yeah, we're a property owner.
Every single property owner.
Member, I don't know that, how that works. But anyway, I get it. Any other questions before we?
I do have a question. For, for events that we have between our building and the association, are we replacing the grass with something that people will be able to set up tables and chairs and have community events there?
What I was hoping.
When, when Rick, when Rick Dyxel comes up, who I'm going to ask next, I'm sure he can answer that because I think we all have that.
Christie, if you could move back and then have Rick and Sean come up.
Well, it might be easier if I just stand.
We need the mic to pick you up and there's a, there's a laser pointer, Rick, for you.
The members of the committee.
To answer your, I'm Rick Dyxel, by the way.
You know us all so well.
The, the. The middle area here, which is presently is lawn, is going to stay as lawn. So this is a lawn reduction project, it's not a lawn elimination project. So the area that, that is, is lawn, which actually we have reduced it a little bit also, it just isn't part of the rebate. So the rebate area is all, this, this entire area here and including this space right here.
Well, that's not even changing, so why are you getting?
I don't know, that's, you have to ask on that question.
Okay, yeah, because I don't understand that, it's not even changing.
Right. So, so the lawn area here, which presently goes into this area, the suggestion is to, see where my little pointer is here, this is existing decomposed granite area where the horse tie-up area is.
Right.
So the proposal is to add a little more DG here, so that's all steppable. This area here is lawn, which is basically about the shape it is. What you're seeing in the middle, that's the septic tank. And then the back area, which is quite shaded, propose to do another decomposed granite area back here. So there's actually two basically sitting areas. But all the area here is all usable for events.
So the grass, Rick, along the out, the, the south side of the building?
Right here?
Here, that wraps around, yeah, starting there? That's, that's going away?
Right, this is the only place where there would be lawn left, just in this spot right here.
Okay, so there's grass here.
Oh, that's a funny.
Along the.
Well, but it's funny grass, but it's, it's, yeah, but it's, it's grass. So there's grass removed, I'm trying to get where they're coming up with this many square, with this many square feet.
Right. Hold on, let's not argue about this.
Can you?
I don't want them to come back later and say we miscalculated because they clearly miscalculated. And I don't care if they did and they're okay with it, but I don't want to get, you know, do this. And I don't, I don't, there's an awful lot of some of these plants, and I don't know what, cotton eastern demidrina lofa, what the heck is that?
Do you want to give a point?
There's an awful lot of it everywhere. So it's got to be something that's not too ugly.
Could it be that part of the calculation, they are including removal of some of the shrubs, existing shrubs, it isn't just the lawn that we're getting credit for.
Everything.
It's some of the shrubs, they are being watered as well.
Because they have sprinklers instead of drip.
So those are going to be changed out for drought, drought tolerance. So that's, I believe.
So all the areas that has creeping red vescu, the clumping grass, that's all included. Plus all the shrubbery that's around the building here, the old eliagnus, the silverberry. And everything's basically removed in this section, with the exception of the trees and, and this bit of lawn.
So the front of the building is just going to have rocks?
Well, okay.
That's what it looks like.
The proposal, and this is because of fire department rules of, and Catherine said that five, there's no planting within five feet of the structure. So the proposal is right along the, the perimeter of the building is a crushed rock. And we have a picture of it here.
I thought the fire department was backing off.
Well, they did.
I mean, if we don't do a new landscape, can we leave the bushes there?
Well, yeah.
They will.
She Bennett recently, and there's still no plans.
The bushes.
Hang on, yeah, hang on, let's focus.
The bushes that are existing, were planted, I don't know how many years, twenty years plus. They're, they're very woody and old, and they are specifically definitely something the fire department would want removed because they're woody.
They're not great, but they're better than rock.
I don't think that the rock, well, the rock will just add some texture and, and no water as far as that goes. But there are other, the plantings that are on, it's not just going to look like rock everywhere.
From the sidewalk to the building will be just rock.
In that section, yes, because it's just, it's only a three-foot wide area. If it's allowed to plant there, we could change that.
We got five years of rock.
Yeah, we could add potted succulents.
You, you could add succulents. I mean, the city is, and this council is spending a lot of time trying to educate residents on what they can do to be in compliance with LA County Fire Codes and home hardening measures. And so staff and Rick, you know, are trying to work out a way to make sure that we are the embodiment of what it is we try to get our residents to do.
So in my understanding, although the fire department, Cal Fire, not just our county fire department, Cal, but Cal Fire is not enforcing for next year the zone zero. It's still in the code and is still going to, at a very short time, probably be enforced. And when they do that, you're not even going to be able to have plants, shrubs and potted, potted plants in that area.
It will be. And, and we, we wanted to, the, the Cal Water rebate of three dollars per square foot is not necessarily something that will exist in perpetuity beyond this year. And so we were trying to ensure we take advantage of that as well.
Forty-three thousand bucks to make an ugly campus ain't worth it.
Hold on. Are we allowed to debate this right here?
No, we're still, we're still in. We're still going through the presentation. We thought maybe we can continue on with what's being presented for the campus. We have examples of different plants that are on both the approval list for Cal Water, but also on the list that we have available to utilize, which is part of the additional, the funding that was provided so that we can get this design in place. And we're presenting it to you because I know it's been some time since you've done the work. So if we can continue on with the presentation, then we can come back to discussions.
Okay. So, Christian, you put this together?
Yes.
Well, did a nice PowerPoint. So he's, we'll go through the, just the plow, the plant pallets so, so Mr. Black, or Dr. Black can see what we've got planned. But anyway, this is just, sorry, it's not the greatest photos, but this is a pink trumpet tree, which has already been planted here, I think it was last year. And then we, so proposed, and this one really doesn't have anything to do, well, with the rebates necessarily because it's already existing. But there's one here and proposed to add another one here and another one over here, just to have a repeat tree in the campus that gives you some blossom.
Excuse me, Rick, is that what we planted for Arbor Day last year?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
And.
The proposal is.
Well, actually, all this area in gold, which does not, it's not included in the rebate or in this part of the phase of the project. But, but there are some succulents suggested in the plant pallet. And most of the agave that I've suggested is actually in the outer areas, but there's a little bit on the backside of the garage that I've suggested. And the, unfortunately, but this plant's a lot greener than it came out. This is the cotoniaster lofa that, that you're asking about, Jim. And so this is, okay, part of the proj, or an issue with the project here is you have a lot of existing trees and the trees, none of them are going to be removed, relates to my knowledge, anyway. And the, the trees, as they get older, they produce lots of roots, as you probably realize in your own yards. And so it's, you have to have plant material that can tolerate shade and sun, plant material that can compete with the roots of the trees. So my proposal or suggestion is to use this plant here, the cotoniaster lofa, which is actually a shrub that's, that spreads. It has deep roots, so it's very low water. It has small green leaves. The maintenance on it is a couple times a year or maybe three. Bennett, we'll, we'll come through and clip it to keep it short because it can grow to eighteen inches if it's not clipped. So if it doesn't get clipped, it's not the end of the world, but if it's clipped, it's a little tidier looking. It, it's very, very durable, does get a little white flower in the spring and a little red berry in the wintertime, but otherwise it's just a nice.
Bees?
Not that I've noticed.
Not too bad, because we don't have a lot of people here, we can't have a lot of bees.
Not, not that I've ever noticed. And the, and the bloom time is like early spring, so it's not like summer or something like that. Okay. Now, the, you're, when we were talking about the rock around the building, my, my suggestion was using, rather than a pebble or a cobblestone to do something that had a little bit of texture to it and some color, this is a crushed rock, it's called Apache Brown. And, and it was, the idea was to use it against the building. And that will add some texture and color in the, in the rock itself. And a weed block fabric would be, will be underneath it, so prevent any weed issues. The, one of the succulents suggested adding into the, in the backside of the building here is this one, it's called Silver Jade. It's, grows about four feet tall, three or four feet tall. And it's a pretty kind of a silvery gray with a little reddish outer edge. And then to add texture to, in the landscape, this, this plant is here, it's called Lamender. It's an Australian grass, or grassy textured plant, grows to about three feet high and has real pretty airy texture and variegated, so it has a white band in the foliage. So it gives nice contrast to the dark green of the ground cover. And then this is a grass suggested that's actually in plume. It doesn't plume year round, it's just a fall plumer. But this is called a white cloud, and it's an ornamental grass in this, well, where the arrows are here and over here. It's pretty unique and, and the plant itself would.
It's not in plume.
Oh, maybe three feet high, nice soft texture.
Oh, it's in plume.
It's like cloud of white. And now you presently already have iceberg roses out at the fence. The proposal is, the, the roses out there are old and they're climbing iceberg roses. And with the new vinyl fences that you've put in, the suggestion is replacing them with bush form of iceberg rose. The, and it will give you the same feel, same look. It's just going to not be, have to be attached to the fence.
And that's easier on the vinyl fencing, right? To not have the weight of the.
It's hard to attach a climber to a vinyl fence without using vinyl tie and it looks really ugly, so better not. And then suggested on the backside of the community association, over back in here, I've got some succulents in this area where the old oleander hedge was. This is one of the smaller succulents in the group and it's called a narrowleaf chopstick. Since, nice textural, about eighteen inches high. And then presently, you do have star jasmine, as, as you mentioned, out in this area. The, the comment, my comment was for it to be clipped hard to rejuvenate it. And the jasmine, of course, does attack, attract bees, as you're mentioning, except that's clear out of the street, so it's probably not an issue. And then this is another succulent that's in this mixture here. It's called rainbow bush and it's a variegated foliage. A lot of the succulents I've used, it's more for texture and foliage color. And, and they don't look spiny or, or cacti or, it's not going to have a desert look at all. I mean, it's more of a, kind of a, a soft, up-to-date landscape plant pallet that give you some texture and interest, visual interest. And then this plant here is actually a California native ornamental grass. Uh, and then this plant, um, here is actually a California native, um, ornamental grass, it's called Canyon Prince. And it can tolerate some shade, it's used a little bit underneath the liquid ambers on the backside of the building here, goes this way. Um, and, and it will be, so it's suggested to be used i- in amongst the plantings that are existing along here, but that's not part of this, uh, plant. But, but it'll be repeated, so the idea is to have repeat textures and colors, so it feels all, has continuity. And then the area, um, right up over by the flagpole is out here in front, uh, re- re- eliminating the lawn and replacing it with daimondia, which is a steppable ground cover. Okay.
And I.
Any other questions?
Any other questions before we open to public? I do have one, I noticed that there were a couple of various grasses that you had. And traditionally, there are grasses like pampas grass and things like that that we're not supposed to use because of fire. Are these, I, I know you well, I'm assuming that these are all approved grasses, not the dangerous grasses?
These are approved grasses, and they're much smaller, like pampas grass grows like eight feet tall. Um, and all, it, now, one of the plants there, that Australian one, the platinum beauty, i- is actually a grassy textured plant, it's not a grass, it's, um, it does not need to be clipped at all. The one with the white cloud one that has, it, it requires pruning once a year to rejuvenate it, so you always have fresh new growth. It doesn't get old and thatchy like a pampas grass would. Also, the, the grassy plants have suggested are sterile, they won't seed and become invasive, like the fountain grasses out here on PB Drive by, well, outside, dapple gray here.
Okay, thank you.
So no, should, no, not a problem.
Okay, I have a question about the, uh, five-foot rule that you were putting in the, the rocks for. Um, is it required to get the, the, um, rebate from Cal Water that we replace this?
It, it could be bark if you wanted, or, or smaller pebble or.
What I'm trying to ask is, because I, I mean, I did have a conversation last Wednesday with Chief Bennett and apparently there is no plans, uh, for them to move on this five-foot rule. Um, so that he knows in the, in the foreseeable future. So what I'm trying to ask is, I mean, can we just keep what's there or is that required, we have to remove that and replace it with something at least succulent variety?
Oh, it, it, well, I, uh, had a conversation with Catherine, with Landscape Committee, and she told me that the, the fire department required a five-foot distance from the structure to any plantings. So that was the reason why I suggested the rock, 'cause I thought it'd be a nice, you know, contrast and, and it's a good example of something you could do other, opposed to just doing dirt. Uh, and you do want it clean, too, 'cause, and you could put decomposed granite around, but that would be, that'd be boring for one thing, but also it splatters, so if, if it rained, you'd have brown mark on the buildings, but if it's rock, it's clean and it will just go down, dissipate down into the soil. Um, so to answer your question, though, if the succulent, you could, it could be substituted with a, a low succulent pop, probably, I don't know, we'd have to confer with the fire department what they say. I mean, it's not flammable, I don't know why they don't accept it, I was just following her guideline, so.
Okay, I just was trying to figure out if that was contingent for the rebate, that we had to replace the five-foot area plants.
You do not have to replace.
Hang on, hang on, yeah, you need to speak into the mic or.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, or Christian can answer.
It doesn't have to be replaced as part of the rebate, uh, but right now, what we do have is high water usage. So if we're going to be compliant with the rebate, we're gonna replace it with something that is either no or low water usage and falls into the parameters. If it was a planting, uh, the list that Cal Water has provided and that Rick has used.
Yeah, okay, got it, got it.
Because presently the shrubs are, is the, it's called silverberry, it, it's a hedge, I mean, they're, they're tall. And, and they're old and woody and s- several of them have died also and they're not in very good health at all. Um, but they were, certainly wouldn't comply with the fire department's rules.
If we did some switching, would it have to go back to the Landscape Committee at the, at the association, since you said it was Catherine that, that had said that the Landscape Committee was requiring nothing within the five feet?
No, uh, no, Ca- what Catherine is recommending is that we follow the guidelines per Cal Fire, LA County Fire Code. Now, what Councilmember Derringer is alluding to is what you said earlier, is that they're currently not enforcing the five-foot rule. Now, why that is, uh, not anyone on the peninsula has an idea as to why. And it's increasingly difficult, considering as a city, we've taken the stance of trying to educate homeowners to harden their homes, but then when the inspections happen, they're not getting a notice of, you know, being, uh, not in compliance. So, uh, we are just simply getting ahead of the game, if you will.
Thank you.
Opportunity to work with Cal Water with this, um, rebate program.
Okay, so hearing no other questions, Rick, thank you very much, don't go away.
You're very welcome.
I, I have a, I have a feeling that some of the questions will be to either you or.
I'm around always if you need to.
Or Sean. Um, I'd like to open for public comment, please. Sean, you wanna?
Sean Bennett.
Good evening, council, Sean Bennett, Bennett Landscape. Um, I don't recall if there was any mention of Rolling Hills Community Association participation in that they're gonna do the removals?
It's a separate.
Okay, so you do have some help from, from them in that capacity?
Speak up, speak up, Mr. Bennett, we can't hear you. All loud.
All right.
It doesn't amplify, yeah.
It's been understood by the council that Ro- Ro- the Community Association is picking up, uh, the, uh, removals. Uh, I think the succulents is a great idea in the stone areas to help make it, make it more pleasant than just rock. I would agree with that, uh, recommendation from Councilman, uh, Black, but those are my two comments, but thank you all.
Thank you.
Melissa McNabb, Lemquail Ridge Road, um, two things I'd like to, uh, commend the council for considering this and, uh, looking to it as a, uh, opportunity to demonstrate and educate to the community. Um, what, what one can do to their home according to the guidelines, whether or not they're being enforced this year or not. I think it's a great idea and a great opportunity. And then also, uh, the Women's Club Beautification, uh, team has discussed this and we would like to share that we're very interested in supporting and working with the city in any way that we could in the future, if the, uh, project does go forward. Uh, to offer support, um, help and things like that, so we look forward to discussing that more in the future. Thank you.
Marian? I see you, Judith, we, we'll get to you. You're not hidden.
Yes, hello, I'd like to second, uh.
Please.
Second Melissa's, uh, uh, saying that the Women's Club does want to support this. And now as a block captain, too, we're really very interested in, of course, having a good demonstration in how to make our homes, uh, fire safe. Now, just, I just wanna make one comment on that five to zero. Uh, I was listening to the, uh, City Council of LA County and, uh, then Chief Maroney was saying, no, we're not going to enforce the zero to five foot. Even though this was actually passed like five, four years ago by the California. Uh, and he said the reason was, is that because many of the houses have wood decks. And he didn't want to have people take away their roses because of, and yet allow the houses to have wood decks. Okay, so, unfortunately, some of our houses here do have wood decks, right? Uh, but anyway, uh, as far as the plantings go, the rock, the rock looks great, I mean, the rock is great. Now, uh, and we can have some really good succulents and I know Rick does a great job of making it look really nice. And I think it makes a really, a good, um, you know, good demonstration for our community, especially now since, uh, if anything now, our commu- you probably have heard that the State Farm is now not going to, uh, going to actually, uh, kinda, they're kind of phasing out of California. They're not gonna renew some of the, uh, uh, renew some of the, uh, contracts that they've had with the residents. So we really need to be able to have a good, uh, you know, a good demonstration and have it very, something that the, uh, community can, can look at and say, okay, hey, this looks pretty good. We can do this around our house.
And Marian, just for the record, would you state your name, please?
Oh, I'm sorry, Marian Visco, fifteenth century.
Thank you. Judith?
Hi, Judith Haynell, thirty-one Eastfield. So quite a while ago, I talked to Stephanie about this rebate that, another city. So I just wanted to know in comparison to, I think it was Rolling Hills Estates, they got quite a huge amount of money for their rebate. Obviously, their campus must be much bigger, so I was just curious in the comparison. And I just wanted to reiterate, you know, as a block captain, that I think it's really important that we set an example by our buildings. So I have a question, I was wondering if the removal includes taking stuff off the trellises?
Yes, ma'am.
Cause there's, cause there's vines right next to the buildings, like the association building. And also is curious if in doing this, I think Rick said that they're gonna leave the grass area, but a lot of it's very uneven for some of the seniors. And when we have our events during the summer, it just kinda has a little bit of hill and dale to it. And, um, and then I was wondering, I know with the rebate, obviously with the fiscal, it helps pay back what needs to be for the cost. But I was wondering if any of it can be allocated to the block captain program that we can put towards the, you know, with the fire department. They have a, I think either a foundation or something, and they were gonna make recommendations about stuff that we could do, because not every fire station gets equipment. So when we had a dinner on the green, I know some of you were there, and they were talking about they would let us know if there's equipment that the fire, our actual fire department here needs. So I was wondering if, I mean, I don't know that it would be a huge amount, but if something could be allocated to help the block captain program. And, um, but again, I just think that this is a great example for what we can do for our community. So hopefully, J- Jim, it won't be ugly.
It will.
Well, I mean, it's just, it's just gonna be very different, but.
Rock will be, I mean, there's nothing, you have, you have a concrete walkway and then you have rock, that's gonna be not very nice. And, and that's just what it is, you know, but if they do something about it.
Are you considering putting any of the?
Hang on, Judith, yeah, yeah, we gotta.
I was just curious, I was just curious if they're then also gonna maybe consider within the rock, putting some of the succulents or something?
I believe that's what was discussed.
We're hoping to do some.
We can intersperse some of it as well.
Just to answer your question, they took out all the grass at Rolling Hills Estates, it's a very big campus and that's why there was a lot, a lot more money for that. It was a completely new kid, their thing.
Right, so is it required to take out the trellis? Not, not take out the trellis per se, but at least the trumpet vines or whatever that's on the trellis?
So it is.
The, um, the Community Association has a, a building project where they're gonna be adding on and that trellis will be removed as a part of that project.
Right, that's what.
Whether they build another one, uh, that, that has yet to be determined. I, John might be able to speak to that.
Yeah.
And I don't believe that part of the scope of this is leveling, making the grass less.
The grassy area and stuff, I mean, it's not horrible, but if they expand the DG, maybe that'll help a little bit, too, and stuff. Okay.
Thank you for bringing this to our attention.
Yeah, okay, okay, thank you.
Yes, Alfred Visco, uh, fifteenth century. Beauty, as they say, is in the eyes of the beholder. So, uh, you know where I'm always at, beauty, uh, aesthetics should not trump public safety and health. So to the extent that, um, we minimize the amount of vegetation within the zero to five feet around the structures, that's a good thing. And it's also sets a good example for our residents. Uh, we have stone around our house, uh, and it looks fine. But again, beauty's in the eyes of the holder. Um, the other comment I wanted to make, we haven't gotten into the financials yet. I noticed Mr. Bennett's, uh, phase one quote for, of fifty-three thousand nine hundred and seventy-seven dollars did not include the time and materials for converting the irrigation to drip. Is there an estimate on that or any type of dollar number to put on that, so you guys will know that it's fifty-three thousand nine seventy-seven plus and what the plus is? Thanks.
Thank you. We'll be, we'll be sure to look into that. Um, any other items from the public? Hearing that, I'll close public comment, wishes of the council.
Well, I, I would agree that I think we need to set an example, but if, if the fire department, and I just talked to Chief Bennett, as I mentioned last Wednesday, there's, he, I mean, at one point, he didn't say this last Wednesday, he said, there's no plans to, to implement that. And it can't say that it'll ever come into implementation. Uh, so there may be studying and, and reviewing and they might end up saying, you know what, we wanna change that because it really, it doesn't make much sense. So I, I just think that if it comes to the point where we don't have a huge amount of space that is in the five-foot rule, if we put in some succulents, uh, and we, comes to the point where we have to remove them and just put rock, more rock. I mean, I don't think that's going to be a big expense. We have the association that we get some removal services for, that we can do it. And so taking something out and putting more rock in is not going to be that much of an expense.
Uh, my viewpoint is, everyone knows who Rick is, everyone who knows who Sean is, everyone knows this is where the rule's going. It's not a bad idea to actually do whatever the heck we're supposed to do, it's gonna look fine, it's a five-year commitment. It'll take us five years to get something approved to replace whatever happened tonight if we started, 'cause it takes forever. So my viewpoint is, you put in the blue newsletter, we're doing this, we're following every rule there is, we're doing this so you can come down and see, 'cause when I told my wife about the zero to five, she said no and walked out of the room, and that was that. And I was like, all right. So I didn't know what the fight was gonna be at some point in time. It would be nice if she could walk down here and say, well, I don't like it, but we'll do it, or whatever. It'd just be good to see what it looks like.
You got a five-year commitment.
Five year, like, I mean, how long have we been working on the tennis court? Seventeen years, we've been working on the drain for, I mean, so my viewpoint is, we just do it. You go phase one, which is all around this part of the campus, get that done, we see what it looks like, we wanna pivot at that point, we talk about it again. But I want, I don't wanna be redoing what Rick does, everyone trusts Rick, and if you say, Rick Dyson gave us a great price, he's came in here, he designed this thing, everyone knows who that is, and he's followed every single rule, this is why we do it.
So are, if we.
And it's plants.
If we approve this tonight, are we approving the design that we saw?
Yeah.
In the presentation?
Yeah, just.
There's no modification for that?
There's no going back, it's a lifetime.
The reason I ask is because.
Your firstborn male child.
I've, I've never been a fan of this type of landscaping, it's just, you know.
Then you're gonna have to move to another state.
No, 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 hold on. There's only one house that I've seen and it's here in our city, and it's Nick Martin's home, and that was the only time I've liked this kind of landscape. And I don't know if anybody's seen it, but it's the only one that I thought was not this extreme zero scape, and I'm not saying that this is.
Nick Martin at the corner up here?
No, 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 that's, no, up in, off of Southview.
Oh, oh, okay, okay, it's the other Martin, okay.
It's a magnificent front yard and, like I said, I, I just go in hating this stuff and then I saw his, I thought, wow, I really don't hate this, and as a matter of fact, I kinda like it. So, you know, I, I'm not saying this is a bad design, but that was so good, that was the only one that, that appealed to me, so, you know, I don't know if this could be tweaked or not, um, you know, using his landscaping as a, as a model. So I don't know if you did that or not, but, uh, it was a really, really nicely done. And it was big, it was, you know, it's, it's, it wasn't sprawled around some other buildings, it was, you know, a cohesive front yard, but, I don't know, I, I really liked it.
And I think it's important that, um, when Rick pointed out that the, although there are succulents and stuff, we're not talking about a ca- a cacti, palm springs, desert look.
And that's, that's exactly what I got out of that one, it was like, this doesn't look out of place, it doesn't look like there's some weird spiky thing sticking up and a little potted, you know, barrel cactus. I mean, it, it looked like it was, it belonged.
I just wish jade plant would come back in style, because I have so much of it and can't get rid of it, and it looks so nineteen-fifties. Um, I have a lot of confidence in Rick, I've seen so many projects that he's done, it would be very, if you were asking me to go out and design that, yeah, it would look ugly if I put rocks there. But I, I really think that if Rick can say that, yeah, we can put some succulents in there, that it would look good. Could we maybe to not be adding more plants and more cost, could we maybe have a few less star jasmines or something like, like that in, in the project?
Cause we can do that, as long as it's.
Because we can do that, as long as it's within the plant list that's provided by Cal Water. That way, it can be inclusive in the rebate program.
But just some of the other maybe ones that you've already looked at, or I'm just trying to, you know, now focus on the costs. I mean, I do think the hedges that are out there now really are unattractive.
They're not nice. They're not nice.
And so, I think it will be an improvement, but I don't know, maybe we don't need 100-star jasmines or however many there were. I don't know.
Well, some of that was to replace some of the areas that are already existing.
That are all, that are getting icky.
There was a little bit of jasmine added up by the entrance to the community association.
Well, I'll leave, I'll leave that up to you. We would like to stay in the same price, but, you know. We are.
Plants typically aren't that huge. If you get one gallon star jasmines, that's not a big cost to the wholesale nursery. Rick just did an entire area for me, and the total plant bill was 1,300 bucks. So, the plants, the irrigation and converting to drip, that costs a lot, because that's a lot of labor, and it's converting to drip. But, you know, I, I can't imagine, I think he's probably right, because the whole idea is so stupid that you can't have anything within your house. No one's going to do it. They can't enforce it, and it'll go away. So, why should we, I mean, if you look, it's going to be from the sidewalk to the building, is going to be concrete and rock. It's going to be ugly.
We're going to put some plants in there.
They're not in the plan.
No, they're not in the plan. They're only...
That's what I'm proposing, when we get to making a recommendation, that would be, we would approve it with the addition of...
And you said succulents, and succulents can look like succulents, you know?
Well, they can look like succulents. The fire department's asking, saying to do this. The reason they're struggling is because every house looks like my house, is you go five feet out, you basically have now killed every plant we have, and now all we have left is grass, because all the plants are in the first five feet, and then grass. So, how they're tackling this and how you're moving the landscaping away from the house is the point they're trying to do. The pushback is what the problem is.
Right.
This is an opportunity to try it here. It is not forever. It's not like we're, it's going to be a short, I get it, five years, no big deal, is put it out there, try it, and see where it goes. I just think trying to redesign this thing, because this is that, I just think we all have opinions about this thing, is let the people who do this, Cal Water's here. I mean, to me, last time I looked at the Cal Water thing, it was forever ago. I mean, I probably have, I probably have a half an acre of grass, and I keep trying to figure out how to get rid of it, but I was like, "Ah," and I just leave it alone, and we just water it, you know? And now, I'm like, "I made for three bucks, I get rid of it."
She'll be knocking on your door.
I do, yeah, we're going to talk to her later. To me, is to try this thing, to see what it looks like, so the whole community can either say, "Oh, my God, this is horrible," and then we say, "Call, call the fire department, here's Bennett's phone number," right? And then they back off.
That is Bennett, but Chief Bennett.
Yeah, Chief Bennett. Sorry, sorry, Sean.
Or Sean, either one.
But I think that's the value of what this is going to be, is to be able to do that, because right now, we all have a vision of what that's going to look like in our head, and we have no idea what my vision versus yours versus yours is all different. Just do it. It's just plants and dirt and rocks. You can always dig it up. We can always add some more later if we have to.
I think that's great. Do I have a motion from any, would anybody like to forward a motion?
I...
Well, I think so. Go ahead. You got it.
If I may, so before you do make a motion, I just want to point out that staff is asking for direction on a few different things. One, we're presenting two phases today, right? Phase one is the rebate area. That comes with a cost for the rebate area, and as Mr. Visco pointed out, some costs that are not necessarily included in the invoice. Staff did try to get line items from Mr. Bennett's company, but they would not provide them. So, I don't know what those potential costs could be. But as you'll see, we also did try to address that area of lawn that is staying, and we, it's an approximate amount, but we took off, I think it was around 1,800 square feet to get down to the number, the rebate coming down to around 43,650. With that said, that does leave monies that the city has not budgeted for in fiscal year '23, '24. And so, I provided you with two different options. One would be to direct staff to come back with a budget amendment, to pull monies out of the general fund of reserves. The second option, because we have a six-month period to execute this project with Bennett as part of their regular operations and maintenance, would be to direct staff to build that into the fiscal year '24, '25 budget. And then, for Phase Two, which is the outer perimeter and is not included in the rebate, we would also just need direction on that, you know, whether you want to accomplish that in fiscal year '24, '25, or if you wanted to do that in and out year, you know, the designs still stand as Rick has presented them. The final thing I would point out is that if you do have a desire to change or add to the plant palette in that zero to five area with some low succulents, that would be conforming to fire code, but also to the Cal Water rebate, then I think we would just need direction on what, how to do that, and maybe, I assume we have to go back to the landscape committee just for their sign-off, and then, and then bring it back to you, just to make sure that there's concurrence. Sorry, I know that was a lot, but...
That's good. You brought us back on point.
I'm going to make a motion, and then if it blows up, we'll go from the next one, okay? I make a motion, we approve it as presented on Phase One only. We, staff needs to figure out the missing part of the budget, and if the missing part of the budget is more than six grand, they, we need to talk about it, but Cal Water doesn't have to come back.
What about modifying the plans?
I'm saying as is.
And when you say that Cal Water doesn't have to come back, meaning...
I'm saying is, I agree with the idea of that they're going to do the rebate, we're going to figure out the water thing, and if you guys want to add succulents, and they agree over the phone, then I'll have to show back up.
I'll second your motion.
Okay.
Would you like to take a roll call, please?
Councilmember Wilson?
Yes.
Can I, Councilmember Black?
No.
Councilmember Derringer?
No.
Councilmember, Mayor Pro Tem Piper?
Yes.
And Mayor Mersch?
Yes.
Hey, can I add two things? One, can we get ahead of this on the blue newsletter to say, "We're going to do this. This is why we're doing this. This is a great thing to do." And Sean, could you give the poor postman a little more space behind the post office box? I've watched that guy to try to get mail out of that thing. It's insane.
And I would like people to actually consider maybe putting pots of succulents in this, this bed of rocks, you know, that would be ugly, you know, that would just, you know, pots can be removed if somebody, if Mrs. Piper wants to come down and see it without any pots.
You could, if you're not going to obey the five, zero to five, you can put pots all along our, you know, the concrete, the concrete that's up here at the building and stuff. So, if we're not going to obey the rules...
If I can kindly ask the city clerk, do you have enough information to proceed with the next steps? Or do you need to read it out loud so you can confirm?
You want me just to read back the motion?
Yes, please.
It was just to approve as presented for Phase One, but get, get more input on the cost for T and M that Bennett did not list out, and then make sure, we'll bring that back. And we will also bring back an official resolution accepting the rebate.
Listen, there are parts that if it exceeds $6,000...
$6,000.
Bring it back only if it exceeds $6,000.
Okay.
Fantastic. Okay.
That's it? All right.
Thanks for coming.
Thank you, everybody. Thank you for all your work. Okay.
Okay.
Get the extra $10,000, just kind of somehow magically appear, but...
It always will. You don't think we're, you don't think we're going to have $10,000 extra this year? I guarantee we're going to have $10,000.
Okay, so now we're going to go back into...
12A.
Now, we're going to go back to, excuse me. We're going to go back now to the regular agenda, back to regular agenda sequence. Item 12A, approve the harbor toxics cost share formula for the upcoming memorandum of understanding period with the regional monitoring coalition.
This evening, Director John Signal, as well as Management Analyst Sam Threw, will be presenting this item together collectively. The goal is to ultimately have Sam oversee this item moving forward, and we'll be working closely with Kathleen McGowan and her consulting firm. So, both will be collectively presenting this item, and if you have any questions, staff will be here to be able to answer. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mersch and City Council.
Welcome, Sam.
Within our storm program, water program, the city is responsible for municipal storm water permit, otherwise known as MS4, for the coastal watershed. The permit helps prevent storm water pollution and protects receiving waterways. We manage these objectives through McGowan Consultants and also collaborate with neighboring cities. The regional monitoring coalition, RMC, was developed to reduce monitoring costs and to avoid duplication of efforts. We are coming to the end of a five-year MOU with Gateway Management Authority, GWMA, for administration and cost sharing for the implementation of the coordinated compliance, monitoring, and reporting plan. A new five-year MOU with GWMA is up for renewal this December, but tonight, we wanted to bring, to present to City Council the cost share formula for your approval. Our share divided between the permatees is the same as it was five, for the last five years. Regarding, regardless of whether we enter into a new MOU this December, this first step is to approve the cost share formula, which is based on area contributing storm water runoff to receiving waters in San Pedro Bay. The RMC will present, sorry, the RMC will present us with a new MOU in the coming months, and at that time, we will discuss those terms with the council. Overall, monitoring costs have gone up due to new permit requirements for the total maximum daily load, TMDL, as well as an increase in labor and lab costs. Staff have spoke with McGowan Consultants, and they advise that if the city does not participate in these cost sharing, in this cost sharing program, the expense would be so high that they could effectively bankrupt the city. Fortunately, some of the expenditures are eligible under the new measure, W program, as new efforts. And I'll let John further explain that.
Yeah, so the way that it's broken down, and as Sam has mentioned, we've been in the five-year MOU period, we're coming to the end of that. What the group is doing, the coalition is looking at, is really to use that same formula to apply it for the next five years. That formula is broken down into, it's a 30%, 60%, 10% formula, where 30% is, there's a base cost that's covered, 60% is based on the area of the city. In our case, we're .92 square miles, and the other 10%, last 10% is covered by the LA County Flood Control District. And so, there, again, they're going to be using the same, that same formula for this upcoming five-year MOU period. The only difference really is that there are new requirements that have been brought up, and those new regulatory standards for the TMDLs revise, were revised, forcing the regional board to make changes to their requirements, which in turn affects the monitoring program administered by our coalition that we're part of. And so, our fees would be increased. Currently, per year, we're paying $7,315, which is actually less than the amended, than the original MOU. But that number is expected to increase from up to $17,024 to $22,723. Those differences are really based on, there are private businesses, there are large industrial businesses that are part, that also have to meet their monitoring requirements. So, there's five large businesses on there. If all of them participate, then we would hit that lower number. But if none of them decided to participate, and they wanted to do it on their own, then that's where we hit that worst-case scenario of about $22,000. And so, as Sam had mentioned, we're really looking at the formula right now. The coalition wanted to have these numbers, or our decision to them. Last week, we asked for more time so we can discuss it with council. But this is something that, they're planning for the next fiscal year, so they would like to, you know, get an idea about the formula. Later on this year, they're looking to draft out the MOU, which they hope have, you know, implemented by the end of the year. So, we're not looking at the MOU right now. We're really considering a cost share formula that we've been part of.
Before we open, any questions from council?
Yeah, I've got a question. I see my signature on this document, but I sure don't remember discussing it five years ago.
I don't think half of us were actually here five years ago.
I'm curious about the area. Where does the area come from?
The total area...
The area for our city.
There is, there is a map that we had, and I know Kathleen had presented it a while ago, showing the, the storm drain areas for our city. This area...
So, it's not the entire city?
It was the map of the city that showed that they claim drains into San Pedro Harbor, which is also kind of iffy. Does it really do that? But somebody made it up. But she had a map. It's just the east, it's that one part of the city.
And that's, that's part of my other question. How do you get into this club?
How do you get into this club?
How do you, how do you get listed on this, this spreadsheet here?
Exactly.
So, the RMC, the coalition was formed about 10 years ago, and that was in response to new regulations at the time that came in around 2011, 2012, and so they formed this coalition.
My question is, there's the Port of LA, Port of Long Beach, Signal Hill, and then...
Then the rest of it.
Right. Basically, how on earth, perceived that goes from here to there, all the way around the donut?
Yeah, it was kind of, I agree with you, Pat. It made no sense, because we don't drain, but that's what they said.
And who would they be?
I kind of think it was the county or the LA water. Who was it that came up with the map? It certainly wasn't us, because we had this debate about we shouldn't be in it.
The eastern part of our city, which is less than a square mile, drains in that direction, so we're part of that harbor toxic area.
Well, the city is just under three square miles, so a third of our city, is it the east side?
The east side.
Okay.
Just so I read this correctly, just because, is, we're currently paying just under eight grand, and we're saying it's going to go somewhere between 17 grand and 22 grand? So, this is, for us, basically 250 to 300% increase. That's across the board. So, big cities are paying, instead of eight grand, they're paying 800,000, and theirs is going to 22 million? Right? Because the same math, it's exactly the same math as before?
Yeah.
So, the totals are, I mean, going up, I'm sorry, it wouldn't be 22, it'd be $3 million? It'd be 3 million? Like, so it's massive increases. And so, and again, we're not cleaning in any water, right? We just want to make sure...
Yeah, that's on with my question. How many drops of water are we going to clean up for $22,000? Zero, right? Zero. I mean, it's always the same answer, zero.
Well, it's, okay, but...
Drops. How many drops of water?
There's nothing we can do about this, right? Okay, let's just vote.
We're going to do it. We have no choice.
You said that there's five, five large businesses that may or may not participate? Do you have the names of those?
We do not. They're industrial businesses or outside of our city, because we don't have any industrial in our city.
And there could be more than five. It's just, that's what the last MOU was. Before that, there were seven, so it depends on...
Are we talking refineries or something? They must be massive businesses to even be considered singled out. I mean...
And from the sound, from what I understand from staff presenting this, is that unless these industrial agencies have, what, 500,000 or more, where they can do this on their own?
500,000 what?
Dollars.
Yeah, or more, right, because they can, let's say they don't want to be a part of this, then they'll have to go out and seek a consultant to manage this on their behalf. And this is why we're presenting this evening. We don't know those small entities can carry this burden on their own. And if they can't, they definitely want to be a part of this program because of how it's divvied up.
Yes, okay, so you have a question now? Okay, so my question is, what, if anything, did anybody ask Kathleen McGowan about the fact that I realize our study in the... about the fact that I realize our study in the Spolveda Basin area was at the other end of the city? But I think it illustrates the fact that our city is absorbing stormwater, probably because we have vegetation that absorbs it. But that incline should not be any different than the incline on the east side. So if we are absorbing water, then we should not be based on our area, which is, makes an assumption that all areas are distributing water equally. And when, if that's not the case in our city, then what if anything's being done to establish that we are not a disgorging entity that disgorges stormwater, that we actually absorb most of our stormwater?
My understanding is, I mean, it's the monitoring requirements that we're responsible to do. We're, you know, they came up with these maps based on, I guess, the way, you know, the drainage flows. Our requirement is really to report the monitoring. And, you know, we decided to join in with these other cities and form a coalition and do that monitoring as a whole rather than individually.
But that was before we knew, we had a study that we knew and found out that we were actually absorbing a lot of water.
Those, those studies.
I don't mean to step on staff's thing here, but those studies that we did, we spent money studying that one canyon, that one contributory. I don't think that, that, and I don't think that staff here could address that. It was probably a question for Ms. McGowan, but my common sense would tell me that just because we were able to say that from that, down that hill, we were able to retain, that would necessarily satisfy the county to be able to say, well, it's going to be the same over there. I think we'd have, if we wanted to try and be exempt from this, we'd probably have to do something very, very similar. But again, I think that question would be for Kathleen.
Right, and then.
I don't think it's relevant for discussion tonight, but I think we should really look at that. I mean, if this is, if there's a process to exit from this MOU, because that, we studied another canyon.
The, the one idea, I will posit, all, all good ideas, is that even with that deemed compliance letter, which I believe is, is the topic, is that there is still kind of ongoing monitoring to ensure that we continue to be deemed compliant now. You're right, Kathleen McGowan can speak much more intelligently on the technical side of that, but it's not like you get that deemed compliance, and then you just wash your hands clean and say, all right, we're going to, you know, go do something else. There is some ongoing monitoring. However, if it's the council's will and prerogative that we believe the MOU should give us X percent discount due to that, now is, now is the time for you all to direct staff in that direction.
Well, if we improve this tonight, it's roughly 100 grand over the next five years. I don't know if there's some way to extricate ourselves. If we did this process in the next year or two, and we can say, we're done with this, we're out of it, you know, count us out, because we have something that should indicate, if not prove, that we're not contributing.
Yeah, so me, if, if the, and once again, we do not have that final MOU. I do know the previous one. You basically, I think it's, give me one second, by March 1st, and then you can, you basically get out for the next fiscal year.
Yeah, no, I get it, there would be, there would be a time lag.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, we should just keep rolling with this, you know, 20 grand a year for the next, you know.
Right, but.
But it's like, in five years, it's going to be, you know, 35,000, so, or, you know.
But part of this is. By the way, I don't think they monitor coming out of our city. There's no actual monitoring coming out of our city. It's, I mean, we're paying it for the group, but no one's actually monitoring the water coming out of our city going into the San Pedro Harbor, because there is no water from our city going into San Pedro Harbor.
Kathleen knows that we're cheap, that we're broke, and that we don't want to be part of anything?
Right.
So she's in the middle of this thing. So if she would have thought we could get out of it, she would have brought that up. So that's my first belief in her, that she has done a great job of coming up with ideas to help us get out of these things. The fact that some big giant industrial players are trying to get out, they probably said, hey, we'll pay the half a thou, and half a million dollars this year and next year, because there's a couple of big boys that are just planning on leaving the state of California. And I assume they just don't want to commit to something for five years. It makes total sense. But there's no, there's no path for us, except for, they didn't make the numbers worse for us. They didn't say, we changed the formula, you guys are going to get screwed like this. They said, we're going to keep the formula the same. You're getting screwed because the paperwork costs 300 times more.
Well, fortunately, there's a base rate, though, that is the same for a lot of people, not everybody, but we're paying the same base rate as Rancho Palos Verdes and the Port of Long Beach. So we're being, you know, it's a, it's a.
The area and the admin pieces are what's being increased differently for us than.
Well, I don't see any way out of this, I just.
Well, I guess the question is, Kathleen's not here. I understand that she, she looked at this, I'm sure. But I did ask this question before the meeting, because I thought it's, it's relevant. I understand it's not the same area that, that we're talking about, because we were talking about Machado Lake with this Spolveda Canyon, and this is the San Pedro area. But I do think that we should explore some ways in which we can minimize the cost for our city, especially since we are, we can show we are absorbing water in another area, and we, you know, we shouldn't have to prove that we're not dispelling stormwater.
Can I suggest that after we open for public comment, when we come back and we deliberate on this, that we could give direction to have Kathleen take a look at it, and to see if, how much we would have to spend to do the monitoring and everything over there to establish that we didn't have it, how that would compare with what the cost would be.
And what the potential savings would be, because this is a lot of paperwork.
Right.
The paperwork's the same, whether there's nothing or something, the paperwork's the same. So they're just saying is, we have to do all this paperwork. And if they drive up here in a truck to test whether they get out of the truck or not, they're going to charge us the same.
So if we, if that's all right with council, we can, when we come back, to decide what direction we're going to give staff on that? That's all right?
Thank you.
Any other questions before I open it up for public comment? Any public comment on this item? Hearing that, I'll close, and now we get to make that direction to what we would like to do on this.
Well, I think too, we could give the direction of, that we were discussing, but I think maybe we just table the matter to get that, so we don't have to make an initial decision on the cost share formula, and get information from Kathleen as to what, if any, options we have, and get some measurement, as Councilmember Mayor Proton Piper mentioned, to see what the savings made possible would be. Because it is a five-year commitment in approving the share, cost share formula. We can't ratchet that back, so now would be the time to assert our deemed compliant letter, because it would be difficult to approve the cost share formula now, and then try to say something later in the middle of the five years.
But when do we have to agree or not agree?
That's my question. That's my question.
So not till December, it has to be, it has to be executed.
They gave us, they needed an answer from us last week, Thursday, and I said, no, that I wanted to bring it to your attention this evening. But in order for them to be able to come up with what the city is going, what our portion is, they need it now so they can start working on that. When we come back with the MOU, we'll probably have the cost by then, what our portion will be, and we can present it at that time with Kathleen. And once we have that, we can potentially even ask about a potential reduction, because we have the non-compliant, you know, we have the compliance letter, so.
What are, what are we committing to tonight, then?
Or dis, go ahead.
Yeah, so I mean, committing, I would say you're committing to nothing quite yet. Basically, what we, the reason for this item is to float that cost share, once again, to, to the council to ensure that there is at least some, you know, preliminary agreement that, hey, we, we don't want to come back and counter, and say, no, we think the base rate should be different, or X, Y, and Z.
Okay, well, I, I think the way to handle this is, thanks for bringing it. We receive and file this, and the direction back is, we know, unless we can figure out how to get out of it, because we think we're non-compliant because of the others, the other streams, is we think us being as teeny as we are, we shouldn't have the same base rates as everybody else. We're just trying to figure out how to make it less expensive, because this is a huge, to us, this is a huge amount of money.
Yeah.
So if there's anything they think of that can whatever, whatever, but at the same time, we know we can't go it alone. If we're stuck in it, we're stuck in it. But I don't see there's any other way to handle this, because most likely, we're stuck in it. I think it's more of a case of, we need to be able to identify things like this for two years from now, so we can start figuring out, how do we get out of some of these things? Because right now, this is, they came, and here we are, and now we got to decide. And there's, the reality is, even if they're like, yeah, that's great, prove it. Okay, well, now we got to sign for the next five years, which we're going to have to sign, to maybe get out of it in three years from now, to not have to do it in five years from now. And we're going to spend a bunch of money to get out of it, and it might be cheaper just to stay in it. This is going to get worse.
I think we need to, if it's only two weeks, I know they want their answer yesterday, but I mean, if it takes them that long to draw up an MOU, they're not going to be happy if we want to change an MOU after saying, oh, yeah, go ahead and make that up, and we'll, we'll deal with that later. That's not an appropriate thing. I think if we take another two weeks, get Kathleen on board, explore, tell us, what are our real options here? How can we work around this? And what are the, how would we make it more palatable for us, a small city, that we're not paying the same base rate as, as the city of Los Angeles?
Well, I would back on that just a little bit. I think we're not, if I was understanding what we're talking about here, we're not talking about changing our base rate and our area rate and our admin rate. We were saying that we think we should be exempt, like we were from the Machado Lake, because we, our TMDLs were within acceptable levels. We would want to be able to establish that that was applicable over there. I think those are two different things, that we shouldn't have, that we shouldn't have to be included because of, over there, we may not be discharging anything. So to me, that's a separate issue than sitting here and saying, you know, I think because we're small, our base rate shouldn't be the same, or our area rate shouldn't be the same, or our admin rate.
Saying all of that. I'm not saying that we should put all our eggs in one basket. I think we should have all, all the options that we can do to either eliminate or minimize our monetary responsibility.
Do we need a motion on this?
Let me make a motion, can I try one? I did so good the last time. The, so then, I want to make a motion that, one, we receive and file, because that's what we have to do. Two, is staff talks to Kathleen and asks her if there's any way she thinks we can get out of this thing. And if there is, then put it back on the next agenda and have her here.
And by getting out of it, you mean based on the fact that we don't have, there's no TMDLs going out there?
I don't want to put any parameters on it. If there's any way to get out of it, then, then tell her to be here at the next meeting, and we figure it out.
Or minimize.
When she says, there's no way you're getting out of this thing, then we need to take the, we're small, we're broke, how the hell we make this thing smaller approach? We know we have to be part of this, but we don't want to be part of this, and see if there's any wiggle room with them when we push back on logical ways to push back. We're not the same size as RPV, our thing should be smaller, our whatever. We don't even understand what they're doing enough to come up with a reason that they should not include us, but we should push back. So that's my long-winded motion. You understand what we're doing?
Well, I, well, first of all, I think Kathleen would have advice on both of those areas.
Well, she's going to talk to her. There's no, it's impossible for, it's impossible to come up with a conclusion here on how we're going to fight back when we have no idea the rules.
No, I understand, but she knows the rules, so that's why I'm saying.
That's why she's going to make a phone, one of the three of them is going to call.
We've spoken to Kathleen, and what she had said is that if you all join the, this coalition, then we're sort of on our own, we're required to do the monitoring. So if we don't do it with the group, then we, we've got to do it individually, and it will cost a lot more money.
Yeah, but this is more fundamental. Why do we have to be included?
Yes, if we think we don't have any discharge over the, to San Pedro Harbor.
We don't need to test if we're not contributing. I mean, that's, that's, that's our basic premise. We can't prove it yet, but that's, that's the direction we would like to.
The reality is, the reality is, when they say, no, 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 and no, we're going to approve what's here. But we need to ask first, how do we get out, and then how do we make it cheaper?
Right.
But we're not doing this on our own, because we're, there's a whole long list of things we're supposed to spend money on, and we have no money for any of it.
The problem before, I don't want to go much longer. The problem is before the canyon that empties over by the reservoir. That is a joint canyon with us and Rolling Hills Estates or Rancho. That was hard to monitor us separately. And that's the one they say dumps into Pedro or Machado. And, and that was, I don't think we can monitor that separately.
Well, there would be Kathleen issue.
Right, but I think we talked about it. I know we did, because it makes no sense that we're in this, that we're considered dumping into San Pedro. And then they said, somehow that goes to Machado Lake, and then that goes to San Pedro Harbor.
So do you just need, if, if we didn't have a motion, and nothing personal, yet. Didn't have a motion, do you understand the, the direction that we're giving staff of what type of questions to be asking Kathleen, and what we're trying to have happen? And you'll bippity-boppity-boo and make it happen?
And can she come here in the next time? And we can.
Well, the, she's only going to come here if there's a viable.
Yes.
If she can explain.
Into staff, why would we pay her then to tromp down here? And it seems to me, depending upon what she has to say, if you can understand what she's saying, if you can give us comprehensive feedback on that, I don't know why we need to pay her to come here.
Thank you.
I know you liked having her a lot.
I love spending money on that. We've spent millions of dollars.
On this, I know.
And we've not cleaned one drop of water, not one.
So if that's all right, would you be, I, I, we don't need, we don't need her to come here.
But Karina, what do you need to walk, what do you need from us that's not a commitment tonight?
What I need it from you tonight, I'm not going to get tonight. So I'm going to get the motion that's on the floor with Mayor Proton Piper, is to come back with additional information on a friendly way of, how can we utilize what we currently have, like the letter, and get out of this contract? And if it is deemed that we can, how can we do so? If it is deemed that we cannot, given all the direction from Kathleen, we will present that at the upcoming first meeting in April.
So could the motion just be that we provide a direction to get further information and bring it back to us?
Yes, ma'am, for this, first meeting in April.
Without doing all the other stuff?
Yes, ma'am.
If that, that would suffice for everybody?
So that's the motion I have. I just need a second, and then.
Wait, what was the motion?
Did you draw your first suggestion?
Was to receive and file, to direct staff to talk with Kathleen McGowan, see if there's any way to get out of this and bring it back at the April 8th meeting. And if not, is there a way for the city to push back on the amount of the Rolling Hills cost share?
I just need a second.
Who made that motion?
That was.
That's Jeff.
There was the, the improved version of it.
It was a second from.
Second by.
Councilmember Wilson, yep.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you very much, thank you for your report.
I have one question for clarification. This GWMA, what is the significance of that? Because some agencies are members of that, some aren't. Is that, is that of any significance? If you look at the table.
With the groundwater MA.
And how many other cities are part of that as well?
Yes, they are. This is.
Yeah, Lakewood, Bellflower, Paramount.
Yeah, GWMA member, yeah.
Rancho Palos Verdes, wait, wait a second. In the preamble, it says we are, but in the table, it doesn't, it shows that we're not. So I don't understand.
WMA member.
If you look at the opening paragraph, the third, the first paragraph with lowercase letters in it.
Yeah, joint, the Integrated Regional Water Management, Gateway Regional.
Yeah, Water Management, Joint Powers Authority. The California Joint Powers, Joint Powers Authority. Oh, and the city is a Bellflower, okay.
We're all part of the coalition, the RMC, that we're not part of the Integrated Regional Water Management Joint Powers Authority.
It's a club we chose not to, to be honest.
Another club.
Okay, thank you.
And then to Councilmember Wilson, I believe it's on the last page, at least this is what I've gleaned. It's the, the members have a different administrative fee, floor and fee ceiling, depending on whether or not you're in that GWMA.
That's what I didn't understand, because, well, the base cost, it's, it's all over the board. LA and the Port of LA is about, I don't know, 50% higher than most of them. I guess it's the county that's at the top, like, what, five times everybody else? I just don't understand how this is calculated. And it's always going to be, for us, being the smallest area, except for Rolling Hills Estates, smallest population, it seems like, it's a regressive type charge, just like the COG is. It's a regressive type charge, just like the cog is, you know, for our, for our size. We're getting picked on. We're a victim.
Okay, moving right along for part of the record, how about item 12 C? Which is receive and file an update from Site Logic IQ regarding the solar photovoltaic dual-fuel emergency generator project for the City Hall Campus Backup Power resiliency and timeline towards a public hearing.
Mayor and council, my presentation will be very brief tonight. This item is continued from your last council meeting where you directed staff to, you provided us with a variety of questions that you wanted answered. You requested additional information specific to project specs for the equipment that was being proposed. And so within your staff report, I've tried to outline the, most of the questions or all of the questions that were asked. And then all of your attachments are specific to the specifications for each of the items that was presented last week. So really, this is, now that you have the additional information that you requested, it's basically a continuation of your discussion. And ideally, provide further direction to staff as to whether or not we would be moving forward, taking this item to the community association, and then returning for an official public hearing sometime in April.
I, I have a question. I didn't see a bid for natural grass and propane only.
It's column C.
What?
Column C.
Yeah, but it's with the solar panels.
No, that's column B.
So, to reiterate from last time, right, option A on page sixty-nine of your agenda. Option A is, is what they had originally presented back in December. Option B, option B is last week was the, the solar project that would benefit both buildings, R H C A and, and City Hall Campus, along with the addition of a natural gas, a dual-fuel, natural gas propane backup system that would only service City Hall, because as you remember, last time, we also had an item on the agenda for the community association to have their own separate dual-fuel backup generator for their building only.
No, it's okay. I didn't see this page. I only, I thought the end of it was the page before where it said recommendation. So I see that the, it's a hundred and forty-six for a propane natural gas. Is that correct?
That was, right.
Okay, I didn't see that. So the B is essentially just a plain old solar power, no batteries, and a natural gas.
And the natural gas propane backup, correct. And, and B is still eligible for the, the federal government funding? C is not.
Right, but it's just a plain old solar panels.
So can I throw two things in here? One is, when, when do we have to have X amount of green energy at the campus to be legal? When's that date? Do you know the date?
So, let me push it. We, last week, uh, last meeting, I, I was looking this up for you. There, there's, there's a tiered step. So there's an ultimate goal of a hundred percent by, I want to say twenty thirty-five. But if I recall from what I was looking at on the web last time, I think it was by twenty twenty-six, we had to reach fifty percent.
Five oh.
Five oh.
This state just pushed back the numbers again. They just pushed it back.
Well, it's never going to work, but.
Because it's not doable, you know? They get a headline that they're going to do this, and then it's all nonsense, and so they push back the number.
Okay, but, so, all right, and then I have a second part of this, which is on C, with the, the issues that the HOA is about to run into on money. And issues we're going to have between the sewer thing that's about to be here, the tennis court, this building, whatever those things are. Could we ask how big the generator and what the delta would be to put one generator in for both of us? Because right now, can we just find out, because it should be just maybe one size larger, and the power's going to run across the same parking lot, dig up the same things. It seemed like that was amiss. I think Beeve mentioned it, and I, we were just going, because they were here, they asked, we're good, fine, let them have their own problems. But my feeling here with the sinkhole, the flying triangle, the, there's a long list of what's going to cost a fortune that's coming. I think we should see what that looks like.
Yes, we can, we can have Psychologic.
Could you upgrade this, the proposed generator for us, for them too?
Yes.
Or the other way around?
Because they're putting one in and upgrade it and have it for us. Makes sense.
So what I, what I want to say is, from us is, here's if we put our own generator in, a hundred and forty-six thousand. Here, if we put a generator in, big for both of us, it's this much.
Right.
Here's if we put.
Option B one and option B two. Yes, we, yeah.
And then if they could, we understand that we cannot get the, the money back. We're going to do the gen, in my mind, we're doing the generator no matter what.
We have to.
We're going to do either the bigger one or the smaller one, depending on what it's going to be. The question, which we don't have to argue about right now, is whether we have to put the solar in. The problem is the solar here, if I'm, if I'm reading this correctly, is two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, which the federal government gives us back a hundred and eight thousand dollars. And the break even on that is fourteen to fifteen years of seeing, if you look all the way down here at the bottom of their little chart. I don't necessarily believe they're break even, but there is some return on that investment. And if they're going to push the concept of solar panels, that we have to do it, which I agree with Jim, they're going to extend it out. But at some point, they're going to make it a thing. The question is, do we take forty percent of the money from the federal government and do it now versus wait a couple of years and do it later?
When, when they may not have that program.
Yeah, I think the issue.
Well, the program's gone. The program's gone. We either take the hundred and eight thousand dollars, because depending on how the election goes, because if the election goes one way, a hundred and eight's gone. If the election goes the other way, maybe it's still there, but I think their program runs out at the end of this year. So if we're going to take this chunk of money, solar is not going to get cheaper. Nothing's getting cheaper. Not a single thing we've talked about ever gets cheaper. It always just gets to be more. So that's my only rub on that. Do I want to spend the, whatever, the hundred and sixty thousand dollars of our money to put solar on the building that we could buy for a lot less? No. But if they're going to make us do it, just like they make us do X amount of recycling and X amount of whatever, which we all know is not real either, stormwater management, then we got to just do what we got to do. So that's, that's my take on it. I don't know what the right answer is.
Do we owe our consultant any money if we choose any of these options or none of them?
We only owe if we do not move forward with a, a project that would fall under, say, the option A, option B one, or option B two, that Mayor Pro Tem Piper is discussing.
So the, the generator only would?
In the generator only situation, as it was explained last week, we have to then go out for a formal R F P process, which Site Logic could bid on, and they could potentially be the lowest responsible bidder, but, um, but that's, we can't.
And what's that amount that we would?
There, they, as Josh said last, last.
Meeting, that one hundred and forty-six would be there not to exceed, you know?
Twenty-eight thousand five hundred was the amount that we gave.
So, yeah, thirty grand is, she's right, but thirty grand. Is, do we remember what the HOA dollar was to do their generator? I do not remember.
I do. Thirty-eight thousand four hundred ninety-five dollars.
All right, that makes sense.
So just, hang on, hang on, hang on, yeah, so just for the record, they, no, it was very helpful. The question asked was, how much was the RCA? And the answer was thirty-eight thousand four hundred.
But for a half, not exactly half, but.
Twenty-six K W.
Which is a lot smaller than a forty-four.
I have some comments to make.
Hang on here, we'll, we'll get the public comment.
Renato, okay.
Public comment, thank you.
Okay, but if you go with our normal, everything costs us two and a half times more than normal people, then this hundred and forty-six thousand is actually reasonably in line.
Correct. And, and let me, let me point out one other thing, too. This generator and the propane tank, based on comments that were made back in December, right, is meant to ensure this campus can, you know, assuming that there is a natural gas break as well in an earthquake or some type of event, that the propane tank, you know, it's going to last for three, you know, and allow an E O C to function in here for a seventy-two hour period at the least.
It said three to five days.
Yeah, so, at the least.
Okay, three to five days in your packet.
Any other questions? Okay, here, and then I'd like to open a public comment, Mr. Visco.
Thank you.
No, thank you.
Okay, Alfred Visco, fifteenth century. I spent way too much time trying to decipher what had been going on, this last report. Here's my, if I'm wrong on these numbers, speak now. From what I can tell, they're proposing a forty-eight K W generator for a hundred and forty-six thousand dollars. That's firm. The solar, a twenty-seven K W solar for two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars, and a hundred and twenty K W battery for a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars. That comes up to six hundred and five thousand. That's option A. And I, how I come with, how I came to those numbers, I had to go back and forth and manipulate the, the numbers to come up with it. So let's talk about the generator first. Our, our, our H C A is, is proposing a twenty-six K W with a protein, propane tank for thirty-eight thousand four hundred and ninety-five dollars. This forty-eight K W is supposed to be, forty-eight K W for three hundred gallon propane tank is supposed to be just for our building. Either our C, our H C A is way low, or we're way high. I don't know the answer. I do know that it's crazy to say that a forty-eight K W generator is going to cost a hundred and forty-six thousand, when a twenty-six K W H only costs thirty-nine thousand. There's, there's something that's wrong here that's not computing in my pea brain.
Might be prevailing wage.
Prevailing wage.
Again, you're going to go out, you're going to go out to a generator, you're going to go out to Generac, and Generac's going to give you a bid, and they're going to promise you they're paying prevailing wage. Okay? That's what's going to happen here. It's going to be, Generac's or Cor, because those are the two generating, generating companies that I'm aware of in Southern California that push. There's no way on God's green earth that this computes. And this was a really good deal for Rolling Hills Community Association. This thirty-eight four ninety-five, if you recall, included maintenance, included a whole bunch of, all the bells and whistles, a lot. So just the way this, this computes in my pea brain. Now, let's talk about the solar, two hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars for twenty-seven K W. That works out to a hundred dollars a watt. A hundred dollars a watt. Forbes estimates the average cost of solar in twenty-fourteen, three dollars a watt, okay? When I put my solar in back in twenty-eighteen, it cost me, before the tax rebate, four dollars and twenty-six cents a watt, okay? Jeff, you just got done doing your house, redoing your house on solar. What does it cost you per watt? Figure it out, okay? You can figure it out. There's no way on God's green earth that's going to cost us a hundred dollars a watt if we go out for competitive bids. The battery, a hundred and twenty K W. I would, based on recent conversations I had with, with Tesla representatives, the battery Tesla, thousand dollars a watt, probably. So it's a hundred and twenty thousand. They're not way, way off on that. Hundred eighty-seven thousand, hundred and twenty thousand, you know, it's within ballpark. These numbers are crazy. I don't know where, I don't know who these people are or where they're coming from, but there's no way on green earth that, that these numbers make any sense to anybody that's been doing this and looking at this. And believe me, I've, I've had a lot of people come out on these batter, this battery issue. I'm still not happy with the numbers I'm hearing. That's why I didn't go with the battery issue. The only reason you might want to go with a battery in this project, not necessarily for, for backup. I think you're, you're better off sizing the generator for backup. The battery, you might want to do what they call peak shaving for the NEM, and Jeff knows exactly what I'm talking about. He's, he's nodding my head. Okay, so you might want to think about, about that. However, you don't really run these buildings at night, okay? And that's where you, under the new NEM, where you're actually losing money, okay? Why you might want a battery under the new NEM is because you're generating, you're using up electricity at night, and you're pulling it from the, from the, from the Edison people. So the battery, you know, and I still think, if you guys went out to Jeterac or Cor or any of these guys, Jeterac especially, and asked them to quote you, you have all the numbers now, okay? You have all the numbers. I think the twenty-seven K Ws is good for, for two buildings. I think it's okay. It might be a little larger, but I think you're in ballpark on that. Battery's probably a good size. Generator's, I think, is way too big for just this one building, based on what association's doing. Either association's really wrong, and they're going to find out that their generator's not going to back them up. But I don't know, okay?
Thank you. And thank you for all your research. Anybody else? Public comment? Mary Nun, I'll close. What are the wishes of the council?
Probably were going to ask for a three, A, B.
Okay, so a couple, so a couple things. One, the meter we get here is an older type of meter, not older, but the old style of meter, in the sense that it runs backwards for more money during the day, and we use it at night, that runs slower forward. The city can get it, no one else can get it. So like, when we replaced our solar, it's possible we kept the old meter without telling anybody.
You just told everybody.
I know. You'll never find it, you'll never find it.
No, it's being recorded. It's hot or whatever, sparrow.
Sparrow, that's right. But, so it's important, so that is a, a big deal on that. So why the battery's not as important to us as it is to normal people. Because they're trying to generate, use the battery for nighttime, where we don't need to use that as much. And also, we're going to get spinning backwards during the day at the highest dollar and burn less, so we'll get the better return on our investment than a normal person would have. Two, there's no way their twenty-six, twenty-seven, whatever, K W is, is even close to right. Because, unless they've committed to no air conditioners, no this, no this, no this, and the, and they're taking the circuit breaker boards and breaking it apart. I did that on my house, dumbest thing in the world, just buy a bigger generator. The part that's interesting to me when I, because I'm buying a forty-four Generac right now in Montana, which I know is not here, but when I take the math of what I'm paying for it, and I multiply it by my two point six, which is apparently everything costs, it's magically pretty close to the hundred and forty-six thousand dollars by the time you're done with tanks and all those sort of things. So if you just take the principle that being in California, we get screwed by two hundred and sixty percent, their number's not that far off. If we're going to go with just the generator, which is a completely solid choice, we need to find out whether we knew both at the same time. They're engineering right now for the air conditioning, and everything's running, and there's more people in here. Because theoretically, if there's a real reason that we're running the generator and this building's being used, it's possible the fire department's in here, and the police department's in here, and who knows, and there's a bunch of people in here, and how long are we running at night, and all those sort of things. So to me, to undersize the generator to save thirty or forty grand on something that's going to last us a long time, because a good quality generator will last us a long time, is probably not the right choice. Question, so I'm totally on board with generator. I just want to see how much more it's to add them. My guess is, it's not going to be that big of a delta to add them on to two, so they stop spending the money, we just put a generator in, and we go forward. The solar, it's really on is, the gamble is how much do we, because the solar is not going to get cheaper for us, ever. Everything we do keeps costing more money. So if that's true, we're better off taking the hundred and eight thousand dollars in a one-time shot and, and paying the ridiculous price that it is. Because yes, it's a hundred and seventy, whatever, it's a hundred dollars a watt or whatever that is, but by the time you get the Inflation Reduction Act, appropriately named, that we're really looking at more like fifty, sixty bucks a watt, which is still completely obscene. But it's not going to be better for us the next time around, in a year and a half, two years, or three years from now, when we have to do it again.
I don't think we're ever going to have to do it. You keep saying like, we have to put solar on. We don't have to put solar on. This whole thing is because our backup generator went out. Just buy a new backup generator. Why do we have to jack up everything by a giant amount?
I'm fine with that, Jim. I'm just saying is, that's, to me, is if, because of the $108,000, because when Elaine did these same numbers, her generator, which was the size of a small school bus, was $240,000, which led us down this question, like, what the hell we're talking about? We should be able to buy one for 40 or 50 grand. Right? That's how we got to here. So we have to, one, to find out what that's going to be, then make the decision, solar or no solar. We can make that decision right now. The difference is, without the solar, without the solar, or if we don't use any of this, then there's no way that Generac or the guys that are using LTE whatever generators next door, they can deal with it the same way Bennett deals with it, which was, the price should have been $50,000, but we're going to do this, so instead it's 70 or 80,000 dollars, because of the prevailing wage and all those different things. So, right?
Yeah, and if I may point out to some of Mr. Visco's questions, the cost for that $146,000 is not just the generator, it's the trenching from the building out to, you know, there, and that's for natural gas and for electric trenching. Whereas, I think, you know, and possibly one of the reasons why theirs is less costly is they're just connecting to their sub-panel. And I'm assuming their sub-panel is very close to where they're putting the generator and the propane, so if there is any trenching, it's literally from that into their sub-panel, whereas we, the main panel for both buildings is back at the shed.
Artie is kind of, like, they're general, we don't have a general. This 146 is including them, acting as the general. They can probably design their own trench that they would have to do for any wiring and not going across the asphalt like us.
Correct. And this, you know, everything that SiteLogic has proposed, whether option A, B, C, right, is a design build, you know, it's a turnkey solution, not with us having to go out to bid, have somebody design the, you know, which you guys had done before. You had asked Pacific Architecture to design a potential solar, you know, program for you, which then would have still had to have gone out to, you know, a GC, so.
Matt?
You know, I was like a relief opponent after we realized we had to have a backup of battery and solar, and then the whole thing blew up to so much money, and I just, I've come back to just a generator, that's all I care about right now. We just need backup, and if we have to get something later, then we'll have to deal with it later. I know it's not going to, the cost isn't going to go down, but we don't know right now what the demand is going to be, what the appliance is going to look like. It could be, what was that, 26?
If I recall from the last meeting.
Well, what if we don't make it?
Then we're the same as every other city in the state, and nothing happens. I think they pushed it back to 2030 already, by the way.
But I, right now, I don't have the appetite to spend more money, we just don't. Like Jeff said a few minutes ago, we got some other big expenses that are heading our way, tumbling our way, and I would support the generator, but that would be all that I would be in favor of.
Are you okay with trying, I'll get to you in a second.
Thanks.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I know, I know.
Thank you, sometimes I do you first. Are you okay with finding out, exploring what it would be to cover the cost of a generator that would service both?
Yeah, no, I'm fair with that.
Okay, thank you. B?
Thanks. I would like to say that I think that solar is advisable because of the fact that, to think that California is not going to be pushing for solar when they are the most environmentally conscious state in the nation, I don't think that is a reasonable position. Then we'll be caught behind the eight ball because we have this over $100,000 in rebate that we have to be in the queue for with a project before the end of the year to be able to get that money. But even on top of that, we pay a lot of electricity costs. We pay for this building and the association building, and that's slated to even go even higher. Edison has got increases scheduled for 2025, 2026, '27, '28, they're already in the queue. And the CPUC usually gives them those increases because they can justify, oh, our costs have gone up, and they pass it on to us. So, it's going to be a win-win. You know, we pay money for things. This is something that's going to yield continuing benefits for the future so that we're not paying for all these high electricity costs. Or when there's blackouts, we're going to be able to have the benefit of the stored energy or kick in our generator if that's the case, because we get sunshine here in California. I mean, this is just, to me, a really, only the reasonable way to go. I think that's clear. Thanks.
Would you be okay with checking on just the generator, what the generator cost would be if we wanted to include, you were the one that had mentioned it last time, giving a backup that would include the association as well before we make a decision on this?
Well, yeah, we could get that, but I think if we put it to the association, but we check on that, because it's going to take them time to vet it, to, and just say, we're checking on those costs, but we want you to, because they want to take up the matter with their board, and that's going to take a while. So I don't see any reason why we can't do that simultaneously, because it shouldn't take us that long to get a cost for what it would cost to have a generator, either we pay for or they pay for, that would take care of both of these.
I think we'd ask them to provide it for us by the next meeting. What, I mean, that's all we're asking for, is just the cost to size a generator.
To include the RHCA.
To include the RHCA.
On the 4th.
Yeah, so.
Next meeting.
That's right.
Okay, do I have a motion on this, please?
A motion to defer till we get that information?
Yes.
Okay, I would make a motion that we deferred the decision on this matter until we get a cost estimate for what it would cost and the type of generator would be to have a generator for both this building and the RHCA building.
I'll second it.
I'll favor. Aye.
Thank you very much. Okay, let's see, so now I'm, 12C, 13B, I believe we're at now. Approve First Amendment to the Professional Services Agreement with Revised LLC, aka Revised Software Systems, for a one-year extension of website redesign, hosting, and software services.
Good evening again, mayor and council members. Back in 2019, this council engaged its services of Revised LLC to provide your existing website and host the site for five years at a cost of approximately $4,940 per year. The city previously had contracted with Civic Plus at a cost of $6,256 for an earlier website iteration. The website went functional and has been so since March of 2020, and so far, all is good. The contract expires on April 3rd, and so staff has been considering and thinking about how to save more money as it relates to hosting services, websites. We've had other conversations related to third-party softwares recently that the city has utilized. But, to do that, to go out for an RFP and whatnot, we would basically then be outside of the existing contract. So, staff reached out to Revised and was able to negotiate a one-year extension. As part of that extension, we would get a design refresh, an upgrade in the content management system, which is quite dated at this point in time, and we were able to lower the cost to $2,400 for that annual instead of $4,000. So a savings a little bit over 50%. If desired, we have the option to renew, but staff recommendation would be to still pursue other options that could potentially be less costly over time for the city while we are within that one-year extension. So, attached to the staff report is an amendment based on the information that I just presented, and we are looking for your approval of the one-year extension and exploration of a more economical solution.
Thank you for that, and thanks to staff for doing all the handling to get us some good rates. Any questions before I open?
I do, I don't understand, is this a software developer policy where they reduce the price after a couple of years?
No, no, typically I find prices go up.
Yeah, so wire price, I mean.
You know, so what I will say is.
If they were giving us a lower price, why wouldn't it be even lower than that? That's how my mind thinks.
Yeah, well, so there are lower prices for, if you, you know, look at the package they presented, right? It's a lower, 2,400 for year one, if you extend year two, 2,400, and then it goes up, goes up 3,400. It is, it is significantly below. The majority of companies out there that are providing municipal, you know, designed kind of turnkey websites, which are all basically templated websites, you know, that they then skin to your desires. I think it's becoming easier and easier for them to provide the services. You know, the models, when they first started, maybe they needed more money because they were in a startup process. I'm just.
Well, and I can understand that, I could see that.
But the reality is, is that, you know, for them to reskin an existing site on their platform already is not as difficult, and to upgrade, you know, they're not moving your site from another vendor over to theirs, they're not building it from scratch up, you know. So there is a cost savings in there, and my guess would be that when they quoted you, there was a lot of upfront design and development costs built into that annual fee attributed over a five-year period.
Significant difference over the prior website, but 2,400 bucks, I mean, I don't know what their hourly fee is, maybe a hundred dollars an hour? Doesn't give you a lot of time, you know.
No, that's what I'm saying, you know, these templated sites are very different than, you know, say, the traditional, and this is me speaking as a former designer, where, you know, it was a quite laborious, you know, situation for somebody to build a unique website, you know, based on the parameters that the client and the vendor, you know, agreed upon. So.
This makes me nervous when prices go down, because everything else is going up.
For the size of, this is one of the reasons why staff would like to explore even just moving to more of like a generic, you know, WordPress-type content management system site that is not necessarily beholden to a provider like this, because I think we potentially could lower our costs even more dramatically. We're a small city, we don't necessarily have the same breadth of needs that a larger city does when it comes to a website. We need to present information, and we need to present it in a quick succinct manner that's easy to navigate. So, they can continue to be an option going forward, or we can also, you know, continue to explore other options that over time, not necessarily in transitioning away, but over time could create substantial cost savings.
B or anyone else have questions of staff?
I don't have any questions.
Thank you, see, I went to you first.
Sorry, I barged you.
So, only the company that builds websites. What I would say is, two things. Pat, reason it got cheaper is they realized we're not paying the ass. That's the first thing that happens?
Only on this.
Everything else goes up. I'm not sure why Christian's stuff goes down and then yours goes up. I'm not sure what's happening there. But so, that's one. Two, the content, which is the hard part where all the work is, is not included in any of this stuff. So if you wanted to resize pictures and whatever, now the tools exist, I don't even know what the platform is, but in general, you upload a picture, it gives you a little thing, you can crop it, you can spin it, you can put words on it, and you put it up there. So, they've taken what used to be web development, when you used to be all on the company, and pushed it all back to here, which is simpler for them. They're taking software that is used for a bunch of clients. So when they need to update the base code, they update it across everything. So it's one shot for them, so they're looking at this as, it's just free money to them. The hosting environment's probably all running on the same stuff, so this is an extremely reasonable thing. My question for you would be is, I would really like to understand the reason that you would want to switch to something like WordPress or something, which I get, you know, we write in it all day long, but is this, so one, I'm going to vote yes on this, and we can move on, but maybe offline, I'd love to understand what's not happening here that you think could be happening and what the value is? Because if I was going to waste your time trying to get this thing from 2,400 bucks to 1,200 dollars is the last place I would spend it. I mean, 200 bucks a month is a very reasonable thing for them to be available when you pick up the phone for base code and dealing with that, and as long as the interface is halfway okay, it's probably fine. So, good job getting to here, that's happy to talk offline.
Oh, all right, can we, can we adjourn right now? Any question, no, I'm all kidding. Any comments from the public? Hearing none, moving right along.
I make a motion we approve as presented.
I didn't want to interrupt.
Good, I love it. Thank you very much, and again, thank you for your effort to map to staff, next item. Remember, matters from the city council? Are we, number 14, anything from city council? Hearing none, moving right along. 15A, matters from staff, receive and file notification from Congressman Lou's office regarding fiscal year 2024, local community project funding award of $1 million towards phase one of the Portuguese Bend Road, Rolling Hills Road, eight-inch sewer main proposed capital project.
Good evening, mayor and council members. As you all know, back in 2020, you engaged NV5 to provide engineering design for the potential of an eight-inch sewer main along Portuguese Bend Road and Rolling Hills Road going down to Lariat Lane, about halfway down. The proposed sewer main crosses clearly our jurisdiction, RH. And then, there was discussion also about Phase 2, which you did also enter into sanitary sewer design and whatnot, but Phase 2 would be from Lariat Lane to Crenshaw, so and City of Torrance. You have invested time and money into the potential of this project, and you have gotten back some pricing and studies as it relates to the sanitary sewer main. The idea of going to a, the Phase 1 was meant to simply connect the RHCA building, the city hall building, and the tennis courts and the guard shack, you know, to sewer. Phase 2, the whole point of that is that you could eventually, if so desired, connect, and I, somewhere in the 200 or slightly over 200 households and properties, you know, to an eventual sewer line, and that Phase 2 line would grow from an eight-inch line to a 10 to 12-inch line. Granted, these are all things that have been discussed by you in the past. Last year, sometime in the March area, the previous city manager filed an application for Congressman Lou's earmarks program, the fiscal year 24 program, and it had been applied for in the previous year, but had not gotten through. In, our understanding is that in discussions with the congressman's office, they saw an opportunity. The program changes every year into what they'll allow you to actually apply for, but there was the ability to apply as it related to groundwater management, and so they did. And the reason why this is before you tonight is just to share that Congressman Lou's office did get $1 million towards the eight-inch sewer main for Phase 1. So again, Phase 1 from city hall to Lariat Lane. And so, we are just asking that you receive and file this information, hopefully as a good news item, and then direct staff to come back at a meeting, a future meeting, ideally prior to budget discussions, to talk about the proposed eight-inch sewer main and the delta between what we have gotten estimates for and the monies that we got, and whether or not the council does want to make future investments in completing this project.
Thank you for that. Any questions to staff on this? Hearing none, open to public, Mr. Visco.
Alfred Visco, 15th century. Well, I'm confused. I thought the whole idea of this Phase 1 project was that it was going to be done in lieu of putting in a deceptic tank. That the... That that the, um, now we're going to, we were thinking about putting it in. I know we got a million dollars, but based on the estimates that I saw in the in the package, there's two hundred, the estimate cost was one million, two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars. So you got a million dollars from Biden bucks, and but you're still two hundred and nineteen thousand dollars short for a sewer line that you no longer need because you put in a new septic tank. Am I reading this right, or am I just confused? Thank you.
Any other public comment? Okay, hearing none. I'm going to close the public, uh, com-
Yeah.
Can I? Yes.
Hey, Fred, there's three septic tanks here. They just put in one new one. There's two more, and if we alter this building, we're going to have to deal with for this building, and by itself, it's going to be somewhere between. Should be, if you put in a septic tank for a building the size, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. So who knows what the hell that means it's going to cost for a new one here. There's there's.
There's two more.
There's two more.
And additionally, at the time that we were talking about this, the association wanted to go ahead. They thought they were going to be moving ahead on the tennis courts a lot sooner than they did, and they were having problems with their old septic tank. And we knew that this was going to take us years to get done, and we didn't even know if we were going to be able to get approval from the downstream cities to handle the effluent, and they really couldn't wait. So that's kind of the story on that.
Clears up my confusion.
And I'm going to say something is, um, the city doesn't typically lean toward Ted Lou, and I appreciate that he was willing to give us a thing and put it in there and put some effort in for us, because that doesn't always happen.
Well, I will share that the way this was announced, given all that's going on down in RPV, when this was announced, I got calls from council members and other people, um, saying, oh, you're going to be using this for landslide. There's a little, they were a little loosey-goosey with the wording. I don't know whether it was the congressman's wording of it or whether it was how the media covered it. I'm not sure. But I did have to do some pretty good talking about, no, no, we have, because they're calling it landslide. So, you know, we have issues on this, you know, our city has a hill up here, and water goes down both both ways, and sewage goes down both both ways. And this is the the north, had to make it very clear, this is the north. This is not 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 being used down towards RPVs. So I was a little disappointed with how that was covered, but glad glad to take the the million dollars. If we elect, so we receive and file is the first thing, and then direct staff to agendize a discussion item regarding the potential Portuguese Bend eight-inch sewer line. If we decide that we're not going to go ahead with this, when you agendize, when we agendize it next time and we decide, if we decide that we're not going to go ahead on that, and we have to give the money back, would that be, we'd have to refuse the grant? Is that, is my understanding correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure I understood that.
And what's our timetable for them? Uh, do we have a timetable for making that decision with them?
I think staff would just recommend that we try to have some decision as we go into, uh, preparing for the fiscal year, uh, twenty-four, twenty-five budget, uh, and capital improvement projects. Uh, that would be our recommendation, but I don't know that there is a a hard timeline from, uh, the congressman's office.
There's probably, there's got to be something.
There probably is. This will not extend in perpetuity. What we're saying is we don't need to get back to him within a month or anything like that.
Okay, so I do I have, um, a motion?
A motion, receive and file.
And direct staff.
Do you agendize?
Yep.
Yes. And to agendize a discussion item regarding the potential Portuguese Bend Road, Rolling Hills Road, eight-inch sewer line project for phase one only.
Do that prior to?
We will bring that back like right away.
Yes. Have a second?
I'll second.
You you you.
She just give her that first, because she was doing the same thing. Hers was better.
And you seconded.
Did all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, thank you very much. Moving right along, um, another item from staff, a verbal update on Republic Services cleanup events.
Uh, good evening, Madam Mayor and Members of City Council. Um, I just wanted to give a verbal update on the recent services that we have been receiving from Republic on their cleanup events. To date, we have had a green waste event, a bulky item event. In this past weekend, we had the electronic waste event.
And shredding.
And shredding. Um, of the three events, uh, staff has been really monitoring closely the success, the failures. What can we do better? How can we improve on these services? And just going to give you a brief synopsis of how the first two have gone. So far, I haven't heard anything about the electronic waste. I'm waiting to receive feedback from both Republic Services, and so far, I've had just positive feedback from the residents about the this past weekend's event. For the green waste, um, it was also very new for Republic on how they structured it, and, um, although staff made every effort to ensure that the green waste was within the parameters that were provided by Republic, um, I do believe that staff could have done maybe a little more, um, done a better method in which we can communicate to our residents the way green waste should be, um, packaged up. Uh, but most importantly, Republic has to also stand to the param- parameters that they provided to the city. They often were lenient with some residents and not so lenient with others. So to ensure that consistency, if there is, their expectations is for the city to communicate these parameters, they need to also be in compliance with what they're providing us. So that's something that we've been working on in-house and ensuring that when we do this again moving forward, that we are consistent on both ends of of the of both agencies. That also goes with the bulky item, although we thought we did, uh, one of jobs on getting information out there on what constitutes bulky item. Um, both Republic and myself, actually my staff, I, uh, personally, I went in, I drove around, but there was a combination of different items left out for bulky item. Um, furniture was listed, refrigerators, but so were construction debris, um, concrete, wood pilings, um, thing like a a tub. And I know I had mentioned this in one of our weekly updates, that there was a, um, lung, um, lung, iron lung that, actually, it was, I thought it was initial call. Yeah, I thought somebody called and said, can I leave it out? But no, in fact, it was out. And they asked, they asked why it wasn't picked up. So I misunderstood my staff, but no, I believe it was placed out there. So that wasn't among the list of items that you should leave out as bulky items. Um, but, you know, these are lessons learned internally in-house, what we can do to improve on our communication methods to our residents. And also to share that if you do have a tub which was left out and they didn't take it with them, um, what to do with that type of, um, debris and such. And also, if you're going to leave out furniture, it would be really helpful and beneficial for Republic to ensure that if you're going to have a bed frame, to make sure it's not a bed frame with the head, the fed, the the headboard and and the legboard, but also to break it down, so it makes it easier for them to pick up. And again, this is something that I'm getting feedback from residents, but also from Republic Services, and what can we do better? So this is just a quick update on what's been going on, what we've been noticing, and how we're going to continue to improve our services with Republic.
I appreciate that. We've got a situation where we have a lot of new new residents. We have new people at Republic. So there's there's been a chance there for people to not understand what our, even though we've put it in the blue newsletter, I would also like to encourage that Republic is supposed to be sending out newsletters, that they would include this again in their newsletters. I I know they give basic parameters. And then also, when they red-tag the these things, because a lot of these things that were not picked up, were not picked up, you know, at the end of our street there on Spur, we had all that construction, um, that should have been C and D, not at the large item pickup. So, uh, those types of things should be picked up with us copies of it, so that when we have to discuss that with the resident, they would know that.
And moving forward, we are going to add, as you noticed, they included the red tag in the report. We are also monitoring the red tags that we also know that our operations supervisor is having out there. So it's, we're getting more red tags on our list than they are reporting now, but we're going to work on that.
That's good.
Can I say something?
Please.
So you mentioned in your presentation, you talk about cons- consistency, and that I think it's really important, because I received a complaint from a resident whose green waste didn't get picked up, and it turns out it wasn't bundled. But I have to tell you, I've lived here for a long time. I would say most residents, at least in the past, don't bundle their their green waste, and it still gets picked up. And specifically, one of my neighbors had a big pile of it. It wasn't bundled in any way whatsoever. And, you know, I think that the day after I got the complaint, uh, I s- I noticed that my neighbor's green waves was was picked up, and I I asked him, what, you know, was there any problem with your 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 green waste? He says, no, I just talked to the guy. He said, leave it like that. That's good, and I'll I'll take it. And I thought, you know, this is this is not great. I'm I'm not saying that his should have been picked up, but, you know, if if one's going to get picked up, then, you know, they need to be a little bit more lenient, like you said, with with others. Or just, you know, give us consistency, so when we get the calls and complaints, we can say, no, that's, you have to do this. But when you don't have to do that, it it leads to a lot of, uh, frustration.
And that's something that I am working very closely with the operations supervisor, and she was disappointed that that happened because a lot of other service workers that were out there were, uh, people, residents were upset with them because they weren't taking it, and there was this one anomaly that I knew at this point that it happened.
I'm not saying that they should they should all be upset, but if there's consistency, you can justify the 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 action instead of just, well, you you were unlucky, sorry, you know.
Yeah, my neighbor's was picked up. Why wasn't mine? Mine looked, mine looked just like his, so. Even in the old days, they didn't want you to bundle it because they didn't want the twine that you would put around the bundling to go because it went to, uh, tell you, didn't use at at times, so.
There's lots, also a lot of people who are greasing their trash guy.
Yeah.
So if you pay the guy, you give him a little extra love, then magically everything you have gets in the trash can. And if you don't, then they follow the rules.
Not the city official policy, nor qualified in the contract. However, however, we defer to the wisdom of the residents.
Yes. All right. I believe that that includes our festivities for the evening. Thank you very much. See you in a couple of weeks.